Mr. President, the time is now 9:01 a.m. and you can call the meeting to order.
Very good, thank you so much, Suki. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the June 11th Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to begin this meeting today with some instructions from the Clerk of the Board and from Victor Hernandez, who will give the instructions in Spanish. Just want to remind everybody, as you look through the agenda, it's going to be a long meeting today. So, everybody needs to adhere to the timeframes for speaking and hopefully we can get through this before 5 o'clock. In any case, Mr. Clerk, can you do the instructions?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the public, the instructions to participate in today's hybrid meeting can be found on the published agenda. These instructions provide information on how to submit written comments and also how to participate via Zoom. Live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services, please click on the Interpretation Globe icon on your webinar controls and then select the Spanish language. At this time, I would like my colleague to provide his instructions in Spanish.
Good morning, President Stolcam, Honorable Supervisors, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Ilianat Rodriguez, Mr. Nivlin, County Staff and all members of the public, of course. My name is Ron Obregón with On Point Language Solutions. Miembros del público, las instrucciones para participar en la reunión de hoy se pueden encontrar en el orden del día publicado. Estas instrucciones proporcionan información sobre cómo presentar comentarios por escrito y también cómo participar a través de Zoom. Se les ofrecerá interpretación en directo de toda la reunión en español. Para acceder a los servicios de interpretación en directo, haga clic en el icono del globo, es decir, un mundo, en los controles de su reunión, webinar, de Zoom y después seleccionar su idioma. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for that. I guess Victor's not here today, clearly. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance now, and today we're going to be led by Supervisor Noelia Corzo.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Well done, well done. Okay, Mr. Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Sure. Supervisor Pine, thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Present.
Supervisor Mueller? Thank you. Supervisor Canepa?
Here.
And President Stolcam?
Here.
Thank you, all present.
All right, we will turn now to the matter on the agenda entitled Honoring the Life of Board Member Remarks. Supervisor Mueller?
Thank you, President Stolcam. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and take a moment to remember Joaquín Domínez Alvarado, 28 years old, the son of Mayor Joaquín Amanez, tragically passed away in a motorcycle accident on the coast. He will always be remembered by his family, friends, and the community who saw him grow up. He was a caring and friendly young man who brought many people together, as was evidenced by the outpouring that we saw at his funeral last week. We send our prayers to Mayor Amanez, the Amanez family, and the Alvarado family, hoping that they continue to feel comforted while they grieve.
Supervisor?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate and commend Sheri Golostan for 10 years of service in the county. She is one of our clerks. Her calm presence and facilitation skills are just a few of the gifts that she brings to the county, and I wanted to publicly thank her for her service.
Me too. Thank you. All right, Supervisor Canepa?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As many of you have heard, about 20 children and a staff member became ill at the Portola Elementary School in San Bruno a couple of weeks when a tear gas training drill conducted by the San Francisco Sheriff's Office went horribly wrong. I understand that our county's Environmental Health Services Division is conducting an investigation into the incident that my constituents are eagerly awaiting to see the results of. I've been discussing with Supervisor Pine on what action the board should take following the release of the environmental health report. I've had some private discussions with San Francisco Sheriff Paul Miyamoto about the incident, but I think we owe it to the residents of the Portola Highlands in San Bruno to let them know that we are working on a plan to protect the residents in this neighborhood from future incidents that may lead to an eventual public hearing. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Canepa. Supervisor Pine? Anything? Okay. Actually, excuse me, colleagues, I actually have two matters that I'd like to chat about for a moment. As everybody knows probably in this room, that last Monday on June 3rd, actually, there was a massive and devastating fire at the construction site of Middlefield Junction in North Fair Oaks. As you know, the Middlefield Junction property was targeted to be a low-income affordable housing site that was to have 179 units available, a childcare center, and a community center. Of note, in those 179 units was the fact that several of those units were actually three-bedroom units, which would be ideal for families and which is quite rare and affordable housing developments. The project was some 10 years in the making. Supervisor Horsley, the late Supervisor Horsley and I started working on this about 10 years ago, and when the fire occurred, it was about 50% complete. Obviously, that's a tragedy for the families who would have moved in early 2025, and it's a tragedy for our affordable housing program just because of the sheer number of units, 179, that were involved. I'd be remiss if I didn't really appreciate and thank all the first responders, including our own dispatchers, firefighters, sheriff's deputies, all for their efforts during the fire. It was, if you saw it on the news, it was truly a large, large fire. And their work helped save the neighborhood and I think some of the homes bordering the development. And fortunately, no person was hurt or injured during that response, so thank you very much to all those responders. Also, I wanted to thank and recognize our many departments that were involved with the community during that day and beyond, including Department of Emergency Management, Office of Community Affairs, Human Services, and the Department of Sustainability, to name just a few. So in closing, on the matter of the fire, I just want everybody to know that we, the Board of Supervisors and the county executive and the entire team, are committed to rebuilding this property, and discussions are currently going on between Mercy and their insurance carriers, and hopefully we'll be able to get started on the rebuilding very soon. Next thing I wanted to share with you all was that last Friday, the county Veterans Service Office, headed by Ed Kirkstan, did I get that right? Yeah, okay. He's our Veterans Service Officer, and he and his team put on a stand-down event for veterans at the Elks Lodge in San Mateo. This was, as I mentioned, last Friday. Basically, a stand-down event is an event for veterans where people could get haircuts, they could get their court cases adjudicated, just a lot of services for veterans. And there were some 300 veterans that attended this event. That's pretty amazing, 300 veterans took advantage. And I just wanted to mention that the legal services were provided by Judge Mike Wendler's Veterans Court, state and federal benefits assistance, toxic exposure screening, VA healthcare enrollment, housing assistance, employment resources, elder care assistance program, and various educational resources and veterans' support and activity groups. It was held, as I mentioned, at the Elks Lodge in San Mateo County. The Elks Lodge gets a shout-out because they provided a free lunch for those 300 veterans, and the veteran commissioners were there also, and of course, we fed the judge. It was a highly successful event, and I'd just like to once again acknowledge our CVSO and Mr. Kirkstan for all his outstanding work. I know all his team was involved in this, and also thank and recognize the Human Services Agency, John Healan, I think that's how you pronounce it, of the Elks Lodge in San Mateo County. So, to the Veterans Office, job well done, thank you. And with that, I believe we'll turn our attention to public comment. Is that right, Mr. Clerk?
That's right, Mr. President, thank you. Members of the public, this agenda item is for items that are listed on consent agenda only, or closed session, or items that are not on the agenda, so any county related matter. So at this time, do not speak on any regular items. Mr. President, I do have 11 speakers from chambers and maybe more on Zoom. Do you want to give two minutes per person, or?
I'd like to, in light of the entire agenda and the time that it probably will take, I'd like to give a minute to each.
Sounds good, thank you.
And consistent through our meeting today. That might work.
Sure. So once again, one minute per person, so we'll start with Margot Provost, followed by Carl Guardino.
I'm Suzanne, and this is Margot, and we were going to share our speech together.
Sure, one minute per person, then, yes, you can come up.
I start and then she finish? Okay?
Yeah, that's fine, come on down.
We came prepared for two to three minutes.
Okay, well, you're welcome.
I have some documents to provide. I'll speak quickly. Good morning, my name is Suzanne, and this is my sister, Margot Provost. We grew up in Burlingame in San Bruno and have always loved San Mateo County. We are here today asking for an exemption and reversal of a supplemental tax assessment that was incurred when the transition of our family home went to us for 15 months after our mom passed away. We closed ESCRO February 1st, 2021, and we reasonably believe that everything regarding our family home, the obligations had been met. We stand before you because of one very important county assessor letter, which we never received. Nearly 16 months after the close of ESCRO, the county assessor's office had caught up with, I guess, taxes and stuff that was backlog during COVID, and sent a very crucial supplemental assessment letter to our family and giving us six months to respond for Prop 58 protection. We never received that letter. To make matters worse, we never received any tax bill once the application time window closed that we were unaware of. We only found out that there was an issue because the current owner of our family home texted us in February of 2023, two years later, pointing out that we had outstanding back taxes that were accruing interest and penalties. That's when we got involved, the next day. We contacted people in the tax collector, tax assessors, and it just started the whole process of trying to figure out what to do. We found out that we missed this Prop 58 deadline. We were encouraged to submit the application post-date, which we did. It was denied because we were told we were notified, although it was from the nine months they sent the letter till that February, we had never had any communication from the county, so we weren't even aware. Can she speak for me? I need to speak. Okay. All the documentation you have received today has been generated as a result of trying to rectify the situation because of this one missed letter. We tried hard to reverse the tax assessment, which we would have avoided had we received the initial paperwork. Your document packet attests to these efforts. Yes, we missed the six-month deadline. Yes, there's records showing paperwork was mailed to us. You will also see clear communication regarding stating that we never received the mail. I would like to say that shortly after we closed ESCRO, we started getting mail for Bosch Holdings LC who bought the house from us, and you'll see in the documentation, I tried really hard to get that corrected. So our assumption is that the mail that was intended to come to us was going somewhere else. I have no proof of that. I can't find any proof within the county where that mail went, but we think that may be part of the problem and why we never got a letter. Yeah, and that was all during COVID. So we diligently tried to solve it. No success. We're here to ask for reversal of the supplemental tax. You'll see it was a large number, over $20,000, and we're asking if you would kindly look into this case.
Thank you, thank you. Got to wrap it up. Mr. Nivlin, could you get with the two women, maybe get their email address and have a conversation about this?
Yes, Mr. President.
Sounds pretty complicated from a legal perspective. So, Mr. Nivlin, the county attorney, will get with you either now or shortly, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, okay.
Thank you. Do you have Carl Guardino?
Mr. Guardino, welcome.
Followed by Neha Marat.
Chair Stolcam and members of the board, it's an honor to be with you this morning. My name is Carl Guardino. I'm honored to serve as Vice President for Global Government Affairs and Policy for Torana Wireless, a next-generation fixed wireless access technology with nearly 350 employees here in the region. This morning, I'm inviting you to join us on Saturday morning, June 29th, for our fourth annual Torana Wireless and Bloom Energy Stars and Strides Independence Week Community Run to celebrate and support our frontline hospital and healthcare workers and the patients they serve. Over the first three years, we've been able to raise and generate $1 million, and this year's ambitious goal is an additional $360,000, which will be made further possible if you can join us for the 5K run or 10K run or kids fun run. I'll follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neha Marat, followed by Lupe Gutierrez.
Good morning, my name is Neha Marate, and I'm an immigration attorney with Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. We ask that the Board of Supervisors prioritize funding immigration legal services, and in particular, rapid response and removal defense. I'm going to read testimony from my former client Byron, who is a resident of San Mateo County. He's at work, he couldn't be here today, so I have translated his words from Spanish to English, thank you. My name is Byron, and I live in East Palo Alto. I came to the United States from Guatemala when I was a teenager. I went to Menlo Atherton High School, and I go to church in East Palo Alto. I left Guatemala because I was in danger over there. I faced things that no little kid should have to face. My mom couldn't take care of me or keep me safe. I found safety and stability here with my dad in the United States. I was put into immigration court as a child. My lawyers helped get me a special status, and they got me out of court. They helped make my future better. I'm now an adult living and working hard in our county as a FedEx driver. I really hope that you help these organizations so that they can continue doing this important work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Lupe Gutierrez, followed by Nancy Goodman.
Hi, everyone, my name is Lupe Gutierrez. I'm an CIU member and steward. I've been a San Mateo County, San Mateo Medical Center employee at the Fair Oaks Health Center for going on 31 years. I want to point out that the media and Warren forgot to mention that there was a fully functioning three-story clinic right in front of the construction. So, to say that there were no casualties, absolutely, that is 100% true, but there were patient and staff that were affected. So I want to share observations and timeline, and I did plan for two minutes about this. And I want to also mention that myself and other staff brought safety concerns about this when this was being planned. There's only one way in and one way out. So at 10:00 a.m., our deputy director and clinic manager were actually notified that there was a fire. We weren't evacuated until 10:50. 10:27, staff was alerted, they alerted the supervisor. The supervisor spoke to the clinic manager, who said that the battalion chief said it was in control. The supervisor then pushed again and FaceTimed with our clinic manager to say this was not in control. So at 10:37, a patient came up to me and said, "I don't feel safe. I'm going to leave, and I think you should too." And my response was, "We haven't been notified that there's a fire." At 10:50, we--
You're going to have, excuse me, you're going to have to start wrapping up here.
Right, but originally, it's two minutes. I'm sorry if you don't want to work late. I took vacation time to be here. This is my vacation.
It's--
And so, at 10:50, we evacuated, there was total chaos. At 11:12, we were out there in the parking lot, an eight-alarm fire. We were finally told that we could leave. When I asked if we were going to be paid because we were not being sent elsewhere, and in the past, we've then had to take vacation time and things like that, our clinic manager cursed at the supervisor and then continued to curse.
Mr. Callagie, can you--
Thank you.
--look into that timeline and talk to whomever is appropriate on that matter? Absolutely, I'll follow up.
Or it would be great to see you in my district one some while.
I'm there every day. Thank you. Not at the clinic.
Not at the clinic.
Nancy Goodman, followed by David Valerga.
Hi, I'm Nancy Goodman, Redwood City, and sorry to follow that. I have three quick points. One is, we are one of the wealthiest counties in the country. We can fund both immigration and affordable housing. It isn't a trade-off. These issues affect the same communities. The other two issues have more to do with the board responsibility. First off, thank you to President Stolcam and Supervisor Pine for serving on the Sheriff's Oversight and Engagement Subcommittee. Please meet in public quarterly because the public will want to hear from you since you've taken on and kept on the role of oversight to the board. We've paid millions in payouts to alleged misconduct to the sheriff. We've had five deaths in the jail. We've had people come tell fix in San Mateo County that they're not safe talking to the sheriff about their complaints, so it would be helpful to meet in public. And second, just can you do an outside independent review of the five deaths in the jail, two suicides, two drug detox, and try to figure out something that our county can do besides having the jail responsible for mental health? The jail is not, the jail's job is not the sheriff's pull. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Valerga, followed by Victoria Sun.
Thank you, David Valerga from Emerald Hills. My comments are very similar to Nancy's in that when you declined to create an independent sheriff's oversight board, you said that the county board of supervisors would be the sheriff's oversight board, and President Stolcam and Supervisor Pine are leading that effort. I am requesting a public meeting because if we never have public meetings, there's certainly no visibility of any oversight to the public. In addition, there are questions about the jail. No entity can independently investigate itself, and consequently, that goes, falls to the Board of Supervisors acting as the sheriff's oversight board to investigate the deaths within the jail. We need to have some independent determination as to what happened and what might happen to prevent future deaths. Thank you.
What makes you think, sir? What makes you think that the meetings would not be public?
Have there been--
It's item 24 on today's agenda.
No, 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 it's not. I'm talking about the independent sheriff's, I'm talking about the sheriff's oversight board--
I know what you're talking--
--which is the function of the county--
Okay, thank you.
--not the commission.
Thank you.
I would love to talk about it on 24, but I'm told I should wait.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Victoria Sun, followed by Alina Hodges.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Victoria Sun, and I'm an immigration attorney involved in the San Mateo County Rapid Response Network. I'm here to speak about the urgency and importance of maintaining our county's rapid response services for immigrant community members and their families. Rapid Response Network provides critical anti-displacement services to fight against both deportation and eviction. Heading into presidential election, politicians on both sides have been using immigrants as a political pawn. Since January of this year, ICE has carried out multiple enforcement actions arresting dozens of individuals in the Bay Area from their homes and workplaces, including right here in San Mateo County. The San Mateo County Rapid Response Network is essential to empower the community in the event of an ICE arrest or raid. It's a powerful way that we, as the community, can hold ICE accountable and prevent further ICE abuses of immigrants. When the hotline is activated, an attorney tries to speak with and negot, tries to meet with the detained person, provide an emergency consultation, and speak with and negotiate with ICE. Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Alena Hodges, attorney with Pengia Legal Services. I'm here to continue my colleague Victoria Sun's comments and to deliver an organizational sign-on letter signed onto by 15 local providers and legal defense services organizations. This Rapid Response Network in San Mateo County was the first in the nation, and it's been replicated successfully nationwide. It provides comfort, it provides accompaniment, and it assures due process for our county's most vulnerable residents, who are both housing insecure, who are at risk of labor exploitation, and who also often don't have access to an attorney at some of the most frightening and challenging times of their family's lives. This letter urges the continuation of funding under Measure K for rapid response and removal defense, signed by Pengia, CLESP, USF Immigration and Deportation Defense Clinic, Immigration Institute of the Bay Area, Catholic Charity San Mateo, Pacifica Social Justice, Peninsula Solidarity Cohort, Peninsula Interfaith Coalition on Immigration, Interfaith Movement for Human Integrity, Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Redwood City, Sisters of Mercy Solidarity Committee, SF Peninsula People Power, Immigrant Legal Resource Center, La Raza Centro Legal, and Faith in Action Bay Area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heriberto Remundo, followed by Guillermo Medina.
Heriberto is a monolingual Spanish speaker. Would it, could I respectfully ask for an additional minute or at least 35 if I could account for it?
Yeah, we'll do two minutes.
Thank you.
Buenos dias, supervisores del condado de San Mateo. Gracias por escuchar mi historia y he vivido por 25 años en el condado de San Mateo.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Heriberto, and I've lived in the county of San Mateo for 25 years.
Y mi propósito es para hablar de mi historia que el condado no quita los beneficios de la respuesta de llama rápida porque--
And my purpose here is to share my story with you all today, and I'm asking that you don't cut the funding for the Rapid Response Network.
En el año 2021, ICE trató de llamarme a sus oficinas para ser deportado, y yo no tenía para, no conocía a nadie para que me ayudara.
In 2021, I had a nice check-in where they were planning to detain me. I didn't have a plan or anyone to support me during that check-in.
Y escuché de la respuesta rápida y llamé por teléfono y Pangea agarró mi caso y--
I heard about the Rapid Response Network, and I had a free consultation with Pengia Legal Services, who was assigned to my case. I called them, and they were able to help me.
Y el año pasado, gracias a la ayuda de la respuesta rápida, pude obtener mi permiso de trabajo para poder soportar mi familia y seguir trabajando.
Last year, I was finally able to get a work permit through the Rapid Response Network support, and that's how I was able to sustain my family.
Y estoy seguro que eso es-- Gracias.
And I'm sure that that's a resource, just to finish what Heriberto was trying to say, that's a resource that will be helpful to not just him, but also other members of San Mateo community to prevent deportation and to continue supporting with legal services for removal defense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guillermo Medina, followed by Suzanne Fiore.
How's everybody doing? My name is Guillermo Medina, as you said. I'm really not prepared for this. I really didn't know this was possible to the public, to be honest, so I'm not coming here with a speech or anything. The only thing I could tell you guys is about my experience, both criminally and immigration impacted. I got incarcerated when I was 16, went to the immigration center at 28, got out close to 30. Now that I'm trying to live my life as an adult, I can express how important the immigration organizations that have helped me throughout this whole journey have been to me, and I'm pretty sure millions of immigrants have, feel the same way, you know? And just like today, the first thing we started was the Pledge of Allegiance, and it spoke about liberty and justice for all. And I'm not sure if that changes whether or where you were born or not. I hope that it doesn't, but I do want to express that we're all humans and that we all should deserve and keep our hearts strong wherever we say every day. And thank you, guys, for giving me this opportunity again. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Suzanne Fiore? Amanda MacArthur? Amanda McArthur.
Hi, my name is Amanda McArthur. I work with SOS Nicaragua de la Bahía, and this is Luis Afaro. He's a little sick today, so we'll speak together. I used to work for Immigration Institute of the Bay Area, as well as Catholic Charities. I was DOJ accredited rep, and I'm, I'm really, would, we both would like to say that it's very important to, for removal defense to continue in San Mateo. We have helped more than 400 people with pro se applications for asylum. They come to us disoriented and not knowing what is going on. I have a PhD in social and cultural anthropology, and I worked in Nicaragua. And Luis Afaro is a longtime member activist in San Mateo County for the Nicaraguan community. And we believe that it's very important for people to have access to removal defense because they're disoriented, they don't understand American paperwork, and it's just all very new. So please, please.
Thank you. Last call for Suzanne Fiore. Okay, that's end of public comment from chambers. So Madam Clerk, please proceed with Zoom comments.
Mr. Clerk, at this time, we have 11 hands raised. And again, this is for consent items beginning at number 25 through the end of the agenda at closed session, as well as unadandized items. We'll begin with Barbara Reiching, followed by Elsa Schaefer. Barbara, please unmute and begin. Barbara Reiching?
Sorry, I didn't realize I had to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, please begin.
Okay, so sorry about that. Yes, my name is Barbara Reiching, and my family has owned property in Marat, on Marata Road in Half Moon Bay for over 60 years. I am again speaking up to express my concern about the continued disrepair and lack of long-term planning for Marata Road. This is a situation that impacts all San Mateo County residents. You have the opportunity to not only fix the current situation, but to put your stamp on it and prove it such that all residents can enjoy coastal access for many years to come. The erosion on Marata Road was caused by the harbor, which was built in the 1950s. This is not a nat, this is not natural erosion, which was caused by climate change, although admittedly, climate change is something we now need to consider in our planning. There are many ways fixing this road can be accomplished with good planning. We need to think much bigger. For example, in Santa Cruz, they repaired four to five severely damaged areas along West Cliff, which included infill and bridges, all in years. Places like New Jersey have constructed reinforced dune systems. In Europe, they have seawalls. We need to take emergency action now. I commend Supervisor Mueller for stepping up to this issue that should have been dealt with years ago, but he is only one person. Please become involved and save this beautiful section on the coast, the only real esplanade in San Mateo County, and that which is part of the coastal trail. Also, thank you Supervisor Mueller for your comments about the Half Moon Bay Mayor's son passing, which occurred at the intersection of Marata Road and Highway 1. This was a different section of Marata Road, but highlights how dangerous it is to exit Miramar Beach onto Highway 1, and the current one-way flow, which was imposed on Marata Road, Marata Road creates a more dangerous situation. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Barbara. Members of the public, as a reminder, we have one minute to speak, so please do adhere to the one-minute time. Elsa Schaefer, followed by Kate Lewis. Elsa, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you, honorable Supervisors, for allowing this time for public comment. I'm Elsa Schaefer. I live in Menlo Park, and I'm a member, sorry, of San Mateo County's Democracy for America, chairing its healthcare tax task force. I am lauding your values and your, that you hold and act on as our Supervisors. I am grateful Supervisor and President Slocum, that last election, you did not endorse the incumbent sheriff, which is a nonpartisan position, and therefore did not put your finger on the scale in such an influential way. I'm also grateful that this entire board and its predecessor board, led by Supervisor Horstley, put so much thought, effort, and financial support into programs and services and buildings for the mentally ill and substance abuse residents. People who need a level playing field have been well-supported by this board, and I cannot thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsa. Kate Lewis, followed by Martin Fox. Kate, please unmute and begin.
Thank you very much. I'm an immigration attorney at Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. My job is to guide my clients through the asylum application process. Immigration law is among the most complicated forms of law, and a subset of that asylum law is no different. If the terms PSG, EOIR, USCIS, I-589 mean nothing to you, imagine if they were not even in a language that you speak. Then imagine that your understanding them was a true matter of life and death. My removal defense clients are survivors of horrific domestic violence and T-LGBT attacks, child abuse, anti-indigenous persecution. Many of my asylum clients have lived in my, our county for seven years or more. I have other clients who've been in the county for 30 years. They have US citizen children, some have US citizen spouses. Unfortunately, as things are right now, if an asylum applicant walks into my office and they live in Santa Clara County, I can take their case, but if they live in San Mateo County, I cannot. For these reasons, I ask you that the county fund removal defense services. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Martin Fox, followed by MCC Zoom. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, my fellow attorneys. President Slocum and County Attorney Mr. Niblin, Supervisors Canapacorzo and Mueller, and County Executive Mr. Callagie, thank you for your service to the county. The name of a very large health services provider should have come to your attention because a large health services provider was mentioned during one of the first health system so-called three listening sessions, as the, the largest substance abuse treatment service provider in that, in the county. And that same county, company, correction, company, was one of two substance abuse treatment providers who have already transferred its Sacramento County and Solana County patients to their respective county health systems. The companies that I have worked for and with are hard-nosed business people that look for profitable opportunities and avoid losing propositions. So it is likely that other California counties can expect to experience what Sacramento and Solana County have already experienced. Please consider the potentially compromising position the county might find itself in if it buries its head in the sand in equal measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Seven hands, MCC Zoom, followed by Carlisle and Young. MCC, please unmute and begin.
This is Greg Diegas, member of the MCC, speaking as an individual. This fall's election promises to be a tsunami of tax-related legislation affecting the fiscal sustainability of our county and our state. My sense is that there is also a tidal wave of outrage over several of these matters. Among those issues threatens to be a $20 billion MTC housing bond costing $48.3 billion in debt service. Eighty percent of the proceeds will be returned to the counties, but San Mateo will not get back what its taxpayers contribute. San Francisco and Santa Clara will get bigger prorata shares. Twenty percent, or $4 billion of the 20 billion, is going to be reserved in a slush fund for the MTC in Botha. So 16 billion in county proceeds costing 48 billion makes no sense. Why not just do a parcel tax and save the wasted two-thirds of the money? Which leads me to San Mateo County's needs, stormwater, sea level rise, and so on. Why don't we just keep the money, do our own parcel tax, and control the priorities and distribution of those funds for our needs? Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Carlisle and Young, followed by April Vargas. Carlisle, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Sheri, and congratulations on your longevity with the county. I'm livid, calling in from Moss Beach, and I'm begging San Mateo County to apply pressure to Caltrans District 4 to improve safety on the coast highways 92 and Highway 1 due to increase in accidents. I was speaking with Sam Licardo at a recent event, and he mentioned also that he acknowledged San, Santa Clara County also suffers from lack of service from Caltrans District 4. I had the chance to travel twice out of the county. South of here, they have a different Caltrans district, I believe it's five. Monterey, their roads, road sides are clean and tidy, so are the ones in Santa Cruz County. And when I came back and crossed the county line, that's when I noticed all the debris on the side of the road. They just, just now are repaving where the sinkhole was a year and a half ago. So please put some pressure, get them to move up their construction projects, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlisle. Five hands, April Vargas, followed by Rebecca Keeler. April, please unmute and begin.
Morning, I'm April Vargas, I live in Monterrey. I'll start with adding my voice to those asking that you please continue to fund the San Mateo County Rapid Response Network. And my second point is that currently inmates in San Mateo County Jail are not allowed to receive personal letters, cards, drawings from their kids. Other counties allow inmates to receive mail. I urge San Mateo County to look into this policy and strongly consider revising it so inmates in the county jail can maintain at least some connection to their families and to the outside world where they're incarcerated, which will generally help mental health and make their transition back into society a little bit easier. So please consider this, and thank you.
Thank you, April. Rebecca Keeler, followed by Andrew Craycroft. Rebecca, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, Honorable Board, Staff, and Community. I'm Rebecca Keeler. I live in North Carolina, Redwood City, and I'm a member of the Coalition for Safer San Mateo County. I'm particularly worried that the sheriff's office is currently policing itself, and I'm concerned about our jail conditions, especially the people who have died in the jail this year. I'm also a mentor for a member of the sheriff's care team who is supposed to have an alternative sentence of furlough, but because the program no longer exists, he's at Maguire Jail for four months. There seem to be some very basic human rights, human dignity and respect matters not addressed here, such as the inability just addressed of to receive US mail. Because of this, both he and I pay for email communication, which is our only way of communicating. Is it fair to ask our new sheriff to identify every single issue within the law enforcement purview by herself? An effective civilian oversight could help in partnership way to suggest areas to look into that may not have been apparent. This could go a long way in both communities, helping millions of dollars of payout for our county taxpayers have made. And I also want to second the comments on Marata Road and the Rapid Response funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Four speakers, Andrew Craycroft, followed by Karen Lobo. Andrew, please unmute and begin.
Hi, good morning. My name is Andrew Craycroft. I'm an attorney with the Immigrant Legal Resource Center, and I'd like to comment in support of the Measure K funding request for immigration legal services, including CRIS, Rapid Response, and the Removal Defense Collaborative. Legal representation is key in immigration proceedings, yet most community members in our county are unrepresented in immigration court. Navigating this process alone, they face the danger of losing their case, as well as being vulnerable to the frauds and scams that unfortunately are targeting immigrants who are seeking legal help. Many of us end up encountering clients who would have otherwise had a strong case for relief, but had ended up going through the process alone and were denied because they could not navigate this extremely complicated legal framework without any help. And at that point, even if their original claim was strong, options are often limited, and sometimes there is no longer any recourse for these people. And so that is why it is vital for someone to have defense while they're going through the process and have quality legal representation at every step of the way. And I ask the county to support our immigrant community members and fund these vital services. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Three hands, Karen Lobo, followed by Celine Dinjanelle. Karen, please unmute and begin.
Hi, good morning. Mike Callagie has misled the board, as well as many, and many Millbrae City residents feel this way. He's bent the truth on the following occasions. He misled the public and painted La Quinta as a failing business. The reality is, the project does not meet the spirit of Home Key, which is why it was denied Home Key funds multiple times. Abuse of taxpayer funds. Spending 33 million on a 99-room hotel is an abuse of taxpayer funds. A recent 99-room hotel in San Mateo just listed for 18 million. That's nearly half the price of La Quinta. San Mateo residents deserve a board and a county manager that manages our tax dollars more responsibly. He's not transparent. On August 23rd, Callagie promised to release the list of 26 hotels that the county considered to put residents at ease, that his team did their due diligence. He reneged on that promise and claimed it doesn't benefit the public. He believes he's above the state constitution. He trampled on the state constitution and lied to the residents by telling them that he had no voice in this project. Article 34 states we need to put this up for a local vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Two hands, Celine Dinjanelle, followed by Paul's iPhone. Celine, please unmute and begin.
Hi, my name is Celine Dinjanelle, and I'm a removal defense attorney at Pangia Legal Services. I'd like you all to imagine something, like really imagine it. You're at home, it's early in the morning, and you hear a knock at the door. You look through the peephole, and it's ICE. Your heart starts beating, you don't know what to do, and you're terrified. Who are you going to call in this situation? You can't call the police, you can't call a nonprofit because it's early and they're closed, and you don't have an attorney on retainer because who does? The San Mateo County Rapid Response Network is literally the only option here. There's no other service of its kind that's open 24/7. If you cut this, thousands of your undocumented residents are going to lose their only protection against ICE, that last line of defense against deportation. Don't pull the rug on this critical safety net. Continue funding Rapid Response Network and Removal Defense. The community is counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Celine. Our last hand is for Paul. Paul, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, community, and good morning to the Honorable Board of Supervisors. My name is Paul Bocanegra, and I am, I, I live in Redwood City alongside of my family. Rapid Response, San Mateo County Rapid Response, it is a need, and it requires the assistance of this board to keep it operational. It saves lives. Secondly, I'd like to state that public safety, it is not being met by the sheriff's office. Our county jail does not receive any mail like our neighboring region. Everything's electronical. If we believe and support family reunification and we support public safety, we need to create better programs that support family reunification, as well as reentry services that help people reintegrate and transition back into a community that is very expensive and requires help and assistance from the county to properly reintegrate our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paul. I'll turn it now back to Mr. Clerk, who has written comment.
Mr. President, there were several, several written comments that were received yesterday on Friday regarding ACA-1 property tax and also other public comment they were sent to the board and also made publicly available on the Board Agenda website. One additional comment came through today for, from Catherine Toms, also for ACA-1 property tax. Please vote against this proposed new tax. And that's end of public written comment. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'll move now to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda items. First of all, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, so could someone make a motion, please, to set the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded.
Sure, we'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Could I, I just clarify, was that a motion to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Pine? Thank you. Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller? Thank you, Supervisor Canapa, and President Slocum.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda has been set, and the consent items have been approved.
Very good, thank you. We'll move on now to the category of presentations and awards. The first item is the presentation of the California State Association of Counties, which is known as CSAC. It's a challenge award to the, to our Information Services Department and the Human Services Agency. And Supervisor Corso is our CSAC representative, and she's bringing this forward.
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment to recognize that our county received one of the 14 challenge awards this year from a pool of 389 applications from all over the state. Our county's HSA Center on Homelessness and Information Services Department developed the county's homeless outreach and mobile engagement application, also known as the Home App, which is a communications tool. Home App, um, which is a communications tool that streamline, streamlines the county's rapid response to assist unhoused residents in our county. It helps our county, uh, respond quickly to reports of unsheltered individuals and provide individuals with resources like emergency food or, uh, or hygiene kits. And I want to quickly just recognize, um, all of the people who, uh, from the county, who, the county employees who worked on the Home App, as well as Claire Cunningham, Director of HSA, and, um, Director Michael Wentworth, um, with the Information Services Department for their support of these efforts. And I'd like to welcome and invite Chastity Benson, um, Chief Operating Officer of the California State Association of Counties, who's here to present the award to our teams. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, thanks for having me. Uh, my name is Chastity Benson, I am the Chief Operating Officer for the California State Association of Counties. Um, thank you Supervisor Corzo for serving on our Board of Directors and sponsoring this agenda item today. Um, also thank you President Sokum for having CSAC here to present the twenty-twenty-three Challenge Awards honoring San Mateo County's great work. For more than a hundred and thirty years, CSAC has worked tires, tirelessly to support each county Board of Supervisors and their communities that you serve by providing direct advocacy and specialized programming for county leaders. As an association of public elected officials, CSAC is not a special interest group, but a major stakeholder in our state's political system. We represent the perspectives and interests of county government officials in the state's policymaking and implementation. We also offer cutting-edge educa, educational programming through the California Counties Foundation and the CSAC Institute for Excellence in County Government. I've seen many of you come through the new supervisors program, um, so thank you for supporting us. Um, the institute's goal is to expand the capacity and capability of county elected officials and senior staff to provide better services to their community. San Mateo has been active participants in the institute's program, having sent several leaders through the educational program. But additionally, the foundation relies on direct county expertise to educate county leaders, and that includes current, two current staff, um, faculty members from San Mateo County. My friends, uh, Robert Mankia and Dr. J Africa, they have both, um, served for, as institute instructors. They have personally, to me, have helped me be able to understand the complexities of county government. We experienced a lot of change through the institute, y'all may have, many of you may remember, um, Bill Shid, who passed away. And those two folks, uh, Robert and Dr. Africa, were really helpful to me to navigate how we were going to move the institute forward in a better way to continue to serve California counties, and I am forever grateful. You all have some stars in those two, for sure. Um, CSAC also explores exemplary county policies and practices and celebrates the best of innovation and services provided by our members. Speaking of innovation, I'm pleased to be here today to recognize the county of San Mateo with the twenty-twenty-three Challenge Award for its San Mateo County Homelessness Outreach and Mobile Engagement Program. Homelessness truly is the most significant cross-cutting issue our fifty-eight counties face. As you know, last year, CSAC unveiled At Home, a first-of-its-kind comprehensive approach to effectively and equably addressing homelessness in California. Your county's CAO, Mike Calagui, served on our working group that helped develop the plan, and I want to thank Mike for his leadership and work on At Home on, on behalf of San Mateo and the state of California. We really appreciate your support. For those of you who might not know, the CSAC At Home Plan is based on six pillars: accountability, transparency, housing, outreach, mitigation, and economic opportunity. San Mateo has already made strides on this issue locally, and that's why I'm here today. Out of nearly four hundred entries in twenty-twenty-three, San Mateo County Home Program was recognized as only one of fourteen challenge award-winning entries as determined by our diverse group of judges. San Mateo launched the SMC Home Program with the goal of streamlining homeless outreach efforts through data-informed approaches. The app leverages GIS technology to automate data collection, real-time reporting, and dispatching requests to county and community-based organizations. The app also empowers caseworkers to track outreach attempts and services offered, facilitating proactive decision-making with real-time insights. During its pilot phase, the program exceeded its target, boasting a remarkable seventy-seven percent s, success rate and responding within twenty-four hours. That is just pretty amazing. This is important because the real-time data not only guided decision-making, but also aligned with the county's overarching goal to reduce homelessness. Furthermore, the app's architecture allows for seamless replication in other jurisdiction with minimal ongoing maintenance costs. Other agencies and cities are already using it as a model. These achievements, coupled with the project's commitment to improving collaborative, collaborative homelessness response, impressed the twenty-twenty-three Challenge Award judges. It is a great honor to present the twenty-twenty-three Challenge Award to San Mateo County for the SMC Home Program, which integrates and expands data systems to enhance transparency, enables data-driven decision-making to tackle homelessness. Congratulations to the county, the dedicated staff behind SMC, and all those working tirelessly to support individuals experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness in our communities.
We think, I'm Claire Cunningham, I'm the Director of the Human Services Agency, and, uh, we thank CSAC for its recognition of the Home App, which has, as, as you've heard at length this morning, enabled us to work smarter with our partners to deliver targeted homeless outreach services. In particular, I would like to acknowledge the hard work of HSA's staff, uh, Selena Toylee, Jessica Silverberg, and Matthew Hayes, who partnered with ISD to make this app a reality. And I also want to highlight that the app, uh, marks a significant contribution to the Board of Supervisors' commitment to achieving functional zero homelessness because it provides a data-informed approach that allows for faster, more efficient response to the needs of our unhoused individuals. So we appreciate the recognition, thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathy Wu Peng, and I'm the Assistant Director of ISD. Michael Wentworth apologizes, he's unable to be here, but we'd like to, uh, reiterate and ditto Claire's, um, um, comments, and I'd like to thank my team, um, for their collaboration and extending this, uh, wonderful technology out to, uh, external agencies. So I'd like to thank Kim, um, Ramika, David Lewis, um, for their hard work and, uh, collaborations. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we can take a picture and then, um, and then someone actually, has to actually receive the award.
Yes. I'll take it. We'll take turns. Sounds good.
Mr. Clerk, are there any public comments?
Sure, thank you. Um, no public comments from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand to comment for item number one, the CSAC Challenge Awards. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do, do we have to vote on this?
That's correct, it's a presentation.
Okay, it's a presentation, we have to vote. Okay, would you like to do that now? Is there a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the presentation of the CSAC Challenge Award.
Moving second in, Mr. Clerk.
Supervisor Pine? Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller? Supervisor Sokum?
Yes.
And, and Supervisor Canepa. Thank you, motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you all. Thank you to CSAC for traveling all the way down. Um, we'll move on to, I think we're gonna skip over item two? No, somebody's here, okay. Item two, uh, under Presentations and Awards is the Presentation of a Proclamation Affirming and Commemorating June Nineteenth, Twenty-Twenty-Four in the County of San Mateo as Juneteenth. Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you, President Sokum. Um, Juneteenth is a holiday that holds deep meaning in the African-American community and has been celebrated since June nineteenth of eighteen sixty-five, when enslaved African-Americans in Texas were finally informed that they were free nearly two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation. A century and a half later, people all across the US continue to celebrate Juneteenth, and yet there are still people in our country and even in our county who do not know the significance, the historical significance of Juneteenth, because they were never taught this history in schools. And Juneteenth only became a federal holiday in twenty-twenty-one. Every single one of us has the opportunity and the responsibility to educate others, especially our children and young people, about this important history. By celebrating Juneteenth, our county pays tribute to the resilience, strength, and immeasurable, and immeasurable contributions of the Black community in our county and throughout our history. We commit to lifting up and centering the voices of Black people and sharing the importance of Juneteenth in our county and nation at large. Most importantly, celebrating and honoring Juneteenth signifies a commitment to stand shoulder to shoulder with Black leaders in the fight against racism, discrimination, and inequality through action and not just words. I invite everyone here to, uh, our Juneteenth flag raising and celebration this Wednesday, June thirteenth at nine AM here at County Center. Now I'd like to invite, um, Councilmember Maurice Goodman and President of the NAACP of San Mateo to share some words with us.
Good morning, and thank you. Um, there's a word in, um, the African co, community, um, called imbuntu, and that means I am who I am because you are who you all are. And I'd like to ask that any of the NAACP members, any other colleagues that would like to come up here and join me as, um, we accept this, uh, proclamation that we do so. I'd be remiss to not mention the celebrations throughout the, uh, county of Juneteenth that, that will be, um, going on this weekend. Um, there, you can obviously do your own research on the many, uh, celebrations, but I do know that Menlo Park will be having a Juneteenth celebration, East Palo Alto will be having a celebration, San Mateo, and then of course, the city of Millbrae will be having a flag-raising, a parade, and a festival. Um, as President of the NAACP of San Mateo, a storied organization both nationally and locally, as well as we will be celebrating our hundredth year in this county in twenty-twenty-six, I encourage you all to consider being members. I'm truly humbled and deeply honored to stand here before you all today to accept this Juneteenth proclamation. As we gather to commemorate this significant day in American history, I am reminded of the resilience, courage, strength, and all of those who fought tirelessly for and died for freedom and equality. Juneteenth holds, it holds a special place in the hearts of millions across our nation. Now as a national holiday, it is a celebration of emancipation, a testament to the enduring spirit of hope, and a reminder of the progress we have made while acknowledging the work that still lies ahead. This proclamation is not just a symbolic gesture, it is a reaffirm, reaffirmation of our commitment to justice, equality, equity, and inclusion. It is a recognition of the struggles and sacrifices of Black people in America and the generational harms of the past, and a promise to continue the united fight for a more just and equitable future. I accept this proclamation with those here with me today with gratitude and humility, knowing that the work to create a more inclusive society is ongoing. Together, let us honor the legacy of Juneteenth by striving for a community, a county, a world, where every individual is treated with dignity, respect, humanity, and where the promise of freedom, self-actualization, and opportunity is realized by all peoples everywhere. Thank you.
Does Mr. Moody want to say anything?
Of course he does.
Thank you, uh, President Sokum. Uh, I'm here to really celebrate San Mateo County's efforts over the numerous decades to honor and to affirm the work of the African-American community here in San Mateo County. Uh, Juneteenth is not just a one-day celebration, it's just a reminder how far we have come as a nation and certainly as a county to uplift the African-American community and the contributions that the African-American community continues to make in San Mateo County, right? Uh, we walk with you arm to arm, we believe in the mission and the, uh, purpose of the San Mateo County leadership, uh, but we also want to remind you that the NAACP is an organization that has tried to move the needle in America on how we do humanity, how we care for one another, and how we uplift one another. So, Juneteenth is another opportunity this weekend to come out and celebrate with us throughout the county at the numerous locations, have good food, fellowship, right, and festivities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. How about, how about another speaker?
I just want to say as a lifelong, um, member, resident of San Mateo County, uh, I just want to, uh, compliment and acknowledge and support what, um, our previous speakers have said about the partnerships and the need for continual working together to meet all of the goals and all of the aspirations and needs of all of our communities and especially our African-American community, which when I came here was much larger than what it is now. But having said that, there's still, um, a presence and there's still important issues that need to be addressed, and I thank the Board of Supervisors for, uh, this proclamation and acknowledging, uh, Juneteenth, which, uh, as a little girl, with many, many years ago, uh, we celebrated in our family on Idaho Street in San Mateo.
Any other volunteers? That's it, okay, thanks Maurice. Um, public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
On Zoom, please click raise hand to comment for item two for Juneteenth. One hand raised. Cletra Newton, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, with respect to the Board, Honorable Board of Supes and all members in attendance, uh, as a member of the San Mateo branch of the NAACP and also the Communications Director for the branch, I wanted to, uh, appreciate our President, uh, Mr. Maurice Goodman, and also members of the Juneteenth Committee that was established by the County Office of Equity under the, uh, current direction of Shereen Malakazali. It is fantastic that this has continued, uh, for several years, and we so certainly want to appreciate and acknowledge the fact that the County Board of Supes continues to hold space, uh, for this level of awareness and acknowledgement, and to amplify the voices of the African-American community in the county beyond the celebration of Juneteenth. So I want to take this time to encourage everyone, uh, at the sound of my voice, to participate in some meaningful way with the NAACP in San Mateo, and to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Cletra. No further hands, Mr. President. Thank you, Cletra. No further hands, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
I'd like to move to proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth.
Is there a second? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. I'll take the whole call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller, Supervisor Canepa, and President Slocum.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all. Let's move on now to item number three, under Presentations and Awards. And this is an annual report by the San Mateo County Youth Commission. And once again, Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I'm really excited to have Valeria with the Youth Commission present the annual report today. Two weeks ago, the Youth Commission had their annual showcase and, you know, which was not just a display of their remarkable work, but also a celebration of the Youth Commission's 30th anniversary. So, this milestone marks three decades of young people rising to the challenge of civil service and recognizing their potential to make impact in our community. Youth represent almost one-fourth of the county's population and highlights the importance of their voices informing the decisions that impact them. I'm continuously inspired by our young people, especially outgoing Chair Valeria Chavez-Franco, who also served on various commissions as the youth liaison, including First Five and many others. So, she is here to present the annual award, and we're excited to hear it.
Franco, good morning. My name is Valeria Chavez-Franco. I am the Chair of the San Mateo County Board, not the San Mateo County Board, I was the San Mateo Youth Commission, sorry.
One day, not yet.
But yes, I'm very honored to be here today in your presence, Honorable Board, County Executive Office, and community. And so, yes, as Supervisor Corzo said, we celebrated our 30th year anniversary. We are really honored to have made that milestone. This, we're extremely proud to accept a resolution on behalf of the Youth Commission, and we're incredibly grateful to have worked under the leadership of Supervisor Noelia Corzo and her team, who have supported us in every project. Christina is here as well. Hi, Christina. But yes, so we are going to move on. This is a picture from our annual retreat, and at the beginning of this retreat, we established five subcommittees, which included the Civic Engagement Community, Educational Equity, Environmental Justice, Health and Wellness, and Immigrant Youth. And that is all, that's a picture of all of us swearing in. There is 23 members to the San Mateo County Youth Commission between ages 13 and 21, and our mission is to really connect youth and adult perspectives on important issues in the county and identify the work that youth believe needs to be done and create projects to have meant that in the community. So, our first subcommittee is the Civic Engagement Subcommittee, and their big project for this year was to have a youth leadership summit, where local youth heard from county leaders, local activists, and local civic organizations, and they really learned how to be more engaged in local county government. As they continue into next year, they really hope to broaden their Leadership Summit Series. They hope to do more voter registration and outreach, which is extremely important considering what's happening this year. And then, they also really want to reach more diverse communities. For our next subcommittee, we have Health and Wellness. So, their focus is on outreach and awareness, and they really use social media and mental health resources they had collected over the past two years to do this. They continued their Mental Health Monday social media campaigns. They distributed mental health resources at Nesbit Middle School. This was their pilot program. And this was really important for this year because the Youth Commission a lot of times focuses on high school, because we just don't have many commissioners that were in the middle school at the time. And this year, we had a commissioner who was in eighth grade, and she really spearheaded this initiative to get into the middle schools and to get mental health resources into the middle schools. Then, we had the Mental Health Directory, which is a culmination of research done over two years by one of our commissioners, who had contacted and been in connection with a lot of mental health resources in the county, and he put it all into a directory, and this was distributed as well. And then, there's research on homework stress. Within the next year, they hope to continue social media, their social media campaigns, expand middle school outreach to additional schools within the county, and advocate for policies to reduce homework stress, which is something a lot of high schoolers in the Bay Area struggle with, especially with the culture around college and work in San Mateo County high schools. And then, we have the Educational Equity Subcommittee. This is a subcommittee that I served on. It's a special place in my heart. We did the Diverse Literature and Mentorship Development Series. These are two series and events that we held this year. For the Diverse Literature Series, we named it the Reading Rainbow Series. We partnered with First Five to feature diverse children's books, authors across local libraries, which included the Belmont Library, the Pacifica Library, and the Hafun Bay Library. And we also held a series of mentorship workshops for high school students in San Mateo County in collaboration for, with Jobs for Youth and United Way Bay Area. And the important part of both of our projects this year is that we wanted to reach parts of the county that we felt a lot of the times were not represented within the Youth Commission, and that was the northern part of the county and the coast. And so, with our Reader Series and with our Mentorship Series, we focused on the northern part of the county, and so Jefferson Union High School District area, as well as the coast, so that's Hafun Bay and Pacifica. And next year, we hope to continue our Authorship Series. This is the second year we've done it. We held three events this year, and we hope to do more events next year, maybe four, we'll see. And then, we also hope to build on our Mentorship Workshop Series to identify new focus topics. Next is Immigrant Youth. So, immigrant youth this year continued expanding on projects they had last year, which included their red card distribution and youth scholarship. So, for the red cards, which, if you have never seen a red card, that, I don't know if this is a pointer, but those images, what they look like, on the front and back, it's instructions on how, on what to do if ICE comes to your door. They distributed these red cards to, in English and in Spanish, to local schools, community organizations, community colleges, and really anywhere that would accept them. And then, we also continued our immigrant youth scholarship, which is something really special that the Youth Commission does to give back to our community. We awarded five $1,000 scholarships to immigrant youth within San Mateo County, and we honored them at our showcase this year. Next year, we really want to continue offering red cards. It's a really vital part of what immigrant youth does, Subcommittee does, and they want to expand to different languages. And then, they also want to just look for more ways to support immigrant youth within the county. There is, there's a lot of opportunity, and that's gonna be their focus for next year. Sorry, there's like a ringing. I'm so sorry if you guys can hear that. Next is the Environmental Justice Subcommittee. The Environmental Justice Subcommittee this year was really hard at work on their Sustainable Foodware Project. They advocated for the use of sustainable foodware within the San Mateo High School Union District by starting a petition. They went to the meeting with the Board of Trustees, and they really were just pushing for sustainable foodware within the district. And as the commissioners who spearheaded that initiative are continuing next year, that is gonna be their focus for next year as well, to cement that project within schools in San Mateo County. And then, the Environmental Equity Subcommittee and the Environmental Justice Subcommittee partnered this year, and we hosted a Read Aloud to, with a youth author. Her name was Kelsey Sweetland, and she is 16 and written three books about environmental justice. And we held a Read Aloud at the Belmont Library to kind of communicate the importance of environmental stewardship to young children. And finally, I just want to make a note about youth liaisons. There are a lot of county commissions within San Mateo County, and the San Mateo County Youth Commissioners have a really special opportunity to be liaisons to these Subcommittee, or to these commissions. And so, for me, I served on the LGBTQ Subcommittee and on the First Five Commission, and it was just a really amazing opportunity to see the other work that commissions do in the county and the expansive ways that we can impact our community. And so, I just want to give a really special thank you to all of the adults who worked with youth commissioners this year on being liaisons and getting involved in their community. And then, as just a final word, I want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to do this work. It has been an incredibly important part of my high school experience, and I know it is as well for every single youth commissioner. And it really allows us to just see the, what needs to be done in our county and gives us an opportunity to do that in some way. And I just want to say thank you, and I'm excited to see what the commissioners do next year. So, thank you.
Thank you so much and for your leadership for the Youth Commission. It was an incredible year, and I'm really excited about what's to come, but wish you well on your journey into college and adulthood. Thank you so much for all your dedication.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Siki, public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No comment, no public comment from chambers for item number three. So, Madam Click, please proceed.
Please click Raise Hand in Zoom for item three, the Youth Commission Annual Report. No comments, Mr. President.
Very good. Motion?
I motion to accept the annual report by the Youth Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move to item number four, which is the presentation of a proclamation designating July 21st through the 27th, 2024, as Probation and Pre-Trial Services Week. Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. I'm really proud to sponsor this next proclamation, which, by the way, will be the last one for me today. Proclaiming the week of July 21st through the 27th as Probation and Pre-Trial Services Week. This actually happens July, but the Board doesn't convene in July, so hence, we're doing it today. But I wanted to highlight this because probation truly does play an essential role in the county's justice system. They supervise over 2,400 adults and over 170 young people and manage many, many cases, over 1,000 cases. Our probation employees play a critical role in the rehabilitation process, helping those in our justice system find value and motivation in a healthier path for themselves. I personally was on informal probation as a young person, and I have to say that I still remember many, many positive conversations that I had with Diana Chilicas from the probation department. And she actually was a probation officer for many people in my family and was definitely a role model and a supportive person for all of us. So, with that, I'd like to, I'd like to welcome Chief John Keane, who will accept the proclamation and share a few words.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. I appreciate it. Honorable Board, Mr. Calley, Mr. Mignell, Mr. Rodriguez, thank you so much for giving me a couple of minutes this morning. I know you have a packed agenda, so I'll be super brief. I would imagine back in 1841, when John Augustus, who was the very first probation officer, took home his first public drunkard, he had no idea what probation would turn into today in 2024. I want to say thank you very much on behalf of the men and women of the probation department. They worked extremely hard to provide services to the people that come through our doors every day. We truly believe in the potential for every single person to better their lives, to have the opportunity to be better than the day they were when they came to us. We recognize that not everyone comes from a good place, and so, this idea of rehabilitation oftentimes starts with abilitation. And so, that is a premise that we know we have to believe in to do this job well. We also want to say thank you very much to our system partners here in the county. This county is of great benefits of the fact that we collaborate and work really well together. I often say that when I travel up and down the state, I have the unique benefit of working in a county which people truly work together and believe in each other, and with that collaboration results in, I think, positive impact for our citizens. And I also want to say thank you very much to our CBOs, who work with us hand in hand, to ensure that not only the gaps that may be present that is the county system we can fill, they work with us to fill as well. And so, to the board, thank you so much. You have always been very supportive of us over the years. It has been our ultimate pleasure to serve you, and it's our goal to continue to grow and to find ways to do our jobs better as we endeavor to move forward into the future. So, thank you very much for this presentation and for this acknowledgement, and, you know, hope you have a good rest of your day.
Thank you, Chief. We'll turn to public comment. Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from chambers. Madam Click, please proceed.
Please click Hand in Zoom to raise hand for item number four, Probation and Pre-Trial Services Week. No comments, Mr. President. Back to you.
Very good. Motion, please?
I motion to proclaim July 21st through the 27th as Probation and Pre-Trial Services Week.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll take the whole call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
And President Slocum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Supervisor. Appreciate you very much.
All right. Item number five, under Presentations and Awards, is the presentation of a proclamation designating the week of June 10th through June 16th as Loneliness Awareness Week and launch of Meet Six Neighbors Campaign. This matter is being sponsored today by Supervisor Canepa.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. President. We gather today to confront a silent epidemic loneliness. Our county, like many others, faces a staggering reality. Forty-five percent of our residents experience loneliness, but we refuse to let this statistic define us. In January, we boldly declared loneliness a public health crisis, and today, we reaffirm our commitment to combating it. In partnership with California Volunteers, the Office of Governor Newsom, our health system and community partners, we launched the Meet Six Neighbors Campaign. This initiative isn't just about simple connections, it's about forging genuine relationships that nurture our community's well-being. Research tells us that knowing just six neighbors can transform lives, fostering resilience, civic engagement, and trust. Therefore, we proclaim June 10th to June 16th as Loneliness Awareness Week. Let's unite to raise awareness and extend a hand of friendship to those who may feel isolated. I urge each of you to join us in this endeavor. Together, let's make San Mateo County a beacon of compassion and connection. Today, I'm excited to introduce our speakers for the proclamation. Dr. Renac Trevetti, Associate Professor of Psychiatry and Behavioral Sciences from Stanford University, Laura Stewart, founder of Friendly Voices in San Mateo County, and Elisa Lee Luis Jimenez in Sunshine Swinford from California Volunteers Team from the Office of the Governor. So, with that, I'd like to see if we'd like those speakers to say a couple of words. Thank you so much for joining us.
Alfred is 74. He's at home alone, day after day. His apartment is quiet. Dialysis keeps him limited, and he worries about stretching his social security payments through the month. Estranged from his grown children, Alfred has been alone for years, long before the pandemic taught the rest of us about feeling disconnected. Sometimes, he calls PG&E, just to have someone to talk to. He feels the world has forgotten him, but we have not forgotten him. We are Friendly Voices, phone buddies for seniors, a nonprofit founded in San Mateo County, and every week, every week, Alfred's phone buddy calls him for deep and meaningful conversation. This trained volunteer brings Alfred friendship and laughter and the gift of shared human connection. And then, there's May, age 62, in Millbrae, a young senior. And then there's May, age sixty-two in Milbrae, a young senior. Over the years, her chronic depression has led her to retreat from the world all around her. Aging is harder than she ever imagined, and with no family at all, she wonders about the future. May shares these fears with her phone buddy every week, and somehow it helps just to be heard. Friendly Voices Phone Buddies for Seniors, again founded in San Mateo County, has trained compassionate volunteers that engage in over five thousand phone conversations every year with isolated older adults in our community. We partner with county nonprofits and community organizations for cost-effective, volunteer-driven solutions for loneliness. Myself, as a thirty-three-year resident of the county, I'm honored to be part of Friendly Voices and watch our county take the initiative to highlight this epidemic of loneliness and launch the Governor's Meet Six Neighbors Campaign. Friendly Voices Phone Buddies looks forward to continued partnership with the county to create even greater impact and to benefit more older adults in this coming season. Let's go.
Great. Laura, thank you for um, for not only being a San Mateo County resident, but just really for your dedication over the years. It really, you've, your work has impacted a lot of, a lot of folks. So, thank you. Do we um, come on up? Thank you. You're making it easy.
I was told that I'm next. I'm Renak Trevetti. I'm an Associate Professor in the Department of Psychiatry and Behavioral Sciences. I think there's slides, but if we can't find them, that's totally fine. I am truly thrilled that San Mateo County is taking the lead in bringing awareness to this really, this public health issue. I'm a clinical and health psychologist and work very, for years I've worked with both veterans in the VA as well as at Stanford and in other states to bring attention to the issues, especially faced by those who are feeling, having serious illnesses and their family caregivers. Oh, okay, great. Thank you. And I just have a couple of slides that I just wanted to share and, you know, we, I'm, I think that one of the things that we know is that the loneliness as an issue is getting more and more attention and being described as a problem. And I wanted to bring your attention to the specific groups that might be at high risk for loneliness. As I was listening to the earlier presentations today, I was also struck by people who had language barriers, who might be struggling with other social determinants of health, people who were inmates of prison. All of these issues can increase the risk for loneliness. The two groups that I would like to highlight are those who have serious or chronic health conditions and people who care for them. People who have serious chronic health conditions, we all know them, we probably all are them. We, there's a heart disease, cancer, stroke, dementia, you name it, and these are risk factors for loneliness. A lot of my work has focused on family caregivers. These are relatives and friends who provide often unpaid care to people who are diagnosed with serious chronic and health conditions. There's, in the United States, there are fifty-three million adults who identify as family caregivers. And if this, if we were to put a sticker on that, that's six hundred billion dollars of unpaid care in the United States. That's a top Fortune, it's a Fortune ten company worth of unpaid care that is given by family caregivers. And we know that both the family caregivers and people who have these health conditions are at risk for being isolated, being loneliness, because they're so busy managing their health, they're so busy managing other things that are going on and are just feeling increasingly withdrawn from their lives. These are, as I mentioned, and as I was hearing today, this is amplified among minoritized groups because of cultural barriers, because of language barriers. Sometimes people are diagnosed with stigmatized conditions like dementia and cancer, so they really withdraw from engaging with others. And I really would love to see initiatives that are specific to these high-risk populations. I just pulled some quick statistics that in San Mateo County where we are, and I've been a resident for over ten years, the top three racial, ethnic groups are people who are identified as white, followed by Asian and Hispanic, and you can see it's almost a third split. So there's a lot of, that our county has potential to take lead on these groups specifically. It's important to describe these problems, and I think the Surgeon General and others have really done a really great job of shining really a spotlight on this problem. I'm an interventionist and I want to know what to do about it. I loved hearing your presentation about the work that you all are doing and the Meet Six Neighbors Campaign, I think is a really terrific idea as well. We also need evidence-based interventions, not just interventions that we want to scale things, we want to do things quickly. But we also want to build evidence, and so our team is building a behavioral intervention that's starting with South Asian populations of people from India, Pakistan, who are managing breast cancer and their family caregivers. And I'm really excited to know what our county is going to do to solve this really important problem and how I can help. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for joining us today. Malice?
Hi, thank you Supervisor for inviting me to speak. My name is Alisa Lee. I'm an occupational therapist by training, a caregiver, and a researcher. And I have led health campaigns for the Clinton Foundation, for Lady Gaga, and for Health Plans. I now have the privilege of serving as Senior Advisor of Community Engagement for California Volunteers in the Governor's Office. And I was also born right in this neighborhood at Sequoia Hospital. So, um, this is the clicker. Oh, there we go. So, we are part of the Governor's Office focused in on engaging Californians in service and volunteerism to tackle our state's greatest challenges of today. So you could see some of our programs here below. We have ten thousand strong in the California Service Corps, many of whom are serving in San Mateo today, including with Civic Spark and Climate Action Corps. And the US Surgeon General in San Mateo County are really leading our nation in taking on one of modern society's greatest challenges, loneliness. Loneliness is a serious health problem. According to the US Surgeon General's office, the health risks of loneliness are akin to that of fifteen cigarettes a day. And with forty-five percent of San Mateo residents experiencing this and half of the US population overall, we are truly facing an epidemic. It's worse among young adults at seventy-three percent and older adults at sixty percent. Dr. Trevetti and other health providers see this, the effects of this firsthand. But there are solutions, and we're excited to partner with San Mateo County on a pilot groundbreaking campaign. When I first started at my role at the state last year to figure out how to better connect neighborhoods, I did a listening and learning tour across the state, interviewing local governments, community-based organizations, community members, and really everyone, because every Californian is a neighbor. We met with researchers who shared that knowing about six neighbors maximizes your sense of health well and well-being. In general, people who know their neighbors are more civically engaged, they have more trust in each other, are better prepared and resilient in times of disaster, and more economically prosperous. There are safer streets, there's happier aging. So I wanted to ask a quick question of those of you here today. Raise your hand if you feel like you know six of your neighbors. Oh, this is amazing. Now, raise your hand if you would like to get to know more neighbors. I like this because it shows that there's an opportunity here to grow social connection right where you live. And that is the simple solution we're trying to build in California right now. Normalize, setting this cultural norm of getting to know the people who live right near you. We know the why loneliness is a pervasive and serious health issue. And the how, with the incredible work happening across San Mateo County and California, such as Friendly Voices, the Youth Empowerment Commission, the NAACP, Parks and Rec, the San Mateo Health System, Peninsula Family Services. These are groups that are on the ground, building the infrastructure and doing the work to make it easier for communities to come together. So that's why we're excited to partner with San Mateo County to pilot this first-of-a-kind Meet Six Neighbors Campaign, a local solution to the loneliness epidemic, to invite the seven hundred and twenty-three thousand Californians who call San Mateo home to pledge to meet their neighbors. This is a simple, smart goal. It's an easy first step, call to action for all neighbors to connect within another. In the same week, we kind of say ten thousand steps a day, or five fruits and vegetables, we're asking for Californians to meet six of their neighbors. San Mateo residents and Californians will be directed to a customized website to pledge to meet their neighbors this summer, and then they'll be prompted to join in on activities with the community organizations, with Parks and Rec, with the libraries. They'll receive tips and guides on how to meet their neighbors and be invited, most importantly, to share stories of why and how they're meeting. So you can go to meetsixneighbors.com to sign up. We've been working hard with Supervisor Kanapa, Bill, Sophia, and others in the office to build out the pledge, and we're able to soft-launch it last week at the San Mateo County Fair with the Band of War. And in terms of metrics for success, we'll be able to track the number of signups, engagement, and number of folks completing the challenge, along with some social connection metrics we worked on with some researchers, which will result in data that San Mateo County and the state of California can use to determine what works and how people are engaging with one another. So here is a screenshot of the website. If you can go to meetsixneighbors.com or that QR code, you can find the signup page. Thank you again for having us, for leading the nation in this conversation on loneliness and for the proclamation.
Thank you so much. You know, Alisa, I really just, I really want to thank you, really want to thank the Governor's, you know, office, want to thank the Governor's Chief of Staff, Jason Elliott. But I just really think you're sort of leaning into this and what we're trying to do here in the county and really to pilot this here is really something extraordinary and special. And so I just really, from the bottom of my heart, and want to recognize my staff, who you, you work a lot with, Bill Silverfarb, thank you, Bill, as well as Sophia Brink, but it's really, it's amazing how these things, they just start with an idea and then they just, they build so much momentum, and I think the momentum we're building is really going to be transformative at so many levels and really reaching out, as you had mentioned, really reaching out to people who need help, really people, I think people to understand that the scourge of being alone is really, you know, the Surgeon General has said it, you know, it equates to a pack of cigarettes. And if we were able to address the tobacco issue, it took us a number of years, we should certainly be able to address this issue. And so I want to thank all the partners for being here today. I think we're really, we're really going to do some incredible work together, and I'm excited to be a part of it. And so thank you very much. Thank you to all of you. Mr. President?
Thank you. Mr. Kanapa, a public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from Chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
On Zoom, please click raise hand for item number five, Loneliness Awareness Week and the launch of the Meet Six Neighbors Campaign. No comments, Mr. President. Back to you.
Very good. Thank you. Supervisor Mueller, I believe, wants to share.
Yeah, so I appreciate all the work around this and that's been done in the past in order to highlight the issue and also the work around this in terms of setting a week aside for it. The only thing that I'm confused about is I'm starting to get emails from residents saying that the board's allocated a million dollars toward this issue, and I don't remember an issue that ever coming before the board or any such allocation as such. And so I just wanted to double-check and confirm my understanding. We haven't allocated a million dollars toward this issue or seen it at the board yet, correct?
Yeah, so, no, the board has not, so, you know, I think one of the issues is, is, you know, obviously we continue to look through, through Measure K dollars, as you know, both Supervisor Pine and I sit on the Subcommittee. But to, at this date, it has not come before the board.
All right. I just thank you for the clarification. So I, but I do absolutely support moving forward with this week. But I did want to just make sure I understood where we stood in context of the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion?
Great. I'll make a motion designating the week of June tenth to June sixteenth as Loneliness Awareness Week and launch of Meet Six Neighbors Campaign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Roll call.
Sure. Supervisor Pine? Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Kanapa? President Stolcuk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we'll move on to, I think we're on item number six. Is that right, Mr. Clerk?
That's right.
Item number six. Item six is to adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the execution of a new agreement with John D. Niblin for his services as the county attorney for the next four-year term. And I have the pleasure of bringing this forward on behalf of my colleagues. So this is basically an employment agreement with our county attorney. And as I mentioned, I'm very pleased to put this forward as a resolution to execute a new contract with the county attorney for another four years. That's four years. And John was appointed by the board, as you know, on April first, twenty twenty-two, and his new contract would retain his services through May of twenty twenty-eight. So a little background, John has served this county well for nearly twenty-three years, starting as a deputy county council and promoting to chief deputy county council, then county attorney. John has also served as, served his country as an officer on active duty and in the Army Reserves in roles including military police platoon leader, military intelligence team leader, and judge advocate officer. And during his two years as our county attorney, John has provided, as you know, exemplary service and leadership. John has advised the board and the county executive through the pandemic recovery, while also supporting a number of efforts including housing and homelessness, equity, climate change, and autonomous vehicle transportation. His work in housing sphere has led to a well-deserved reputation as a statewide thought leader. In addition to receiving the compensation and benefits provided to other managers in the county, the provisions of the new contract would also include, number one, an advancement from county attorney salary step D to salary step E, which is basically a five-point-seven percent increase in the salary for the county attorney. Number two, accrual of twelve hours of vacation time per pay period. Number three, a contribution from the county to a defined contribution plan in an amount equivalent to three percent of his salary. And finally, severance pay in the likely event of a termination without cause in an amount equal to twelve months' salary or for the remaining time on his agreement, whichever is less. And this new four-year contract will guarantee the continuation of John's exemplary service and leadership to the county. And I just want to express my personal thank you to Mr. Niblin because I call him on weekends, I call him after hours, I call him at all times, I text him, and he's always there, he's always responsive. And I just think we're well-served with Mr. Niblin's tenure as our county attorney. And colleagues, I don't know if any of you would like to add comments, but I'd call, call on you now, should you want.
I'm happy to share a few words. I would like to also share how grateful I am for County Attorney Niblin's leadership here at the county. I don't think I've ever met an attorney that, like, can get back to you as quickly as John does. Sometimes within minutes, it's really amazing. John, you're extremely insightful, collaborative, professional, and I think an amazing example of what a public servant is. And I know that I personally have grown and benefited so much from your legal guidance and support throughout this year and a half that I've been with the county. And it's very clear to me that you deeply care about this community and that you are committed. And I, I think it's an honor for us to, you know, be able to vote on this, and I'm sure we all look forward to working together in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller?
I'd also join in those comments. John, you're incredible professional. I also think you're incredible manager.
John, you're an incredible professional. I also think you're an incredible manager. The way that you work with your team is watching that. It's a rel-run firm here within the county. I very much appreciate the professionalism. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Pine?
John, it's been a privilege to work with you. You're an outstanding public servant, an outstanding attorney. Really set the standard for, what do I know, you know, of excellence for an in-house counsel. We're really fortunate for your, for your service. Thank you.
John, just want to thank you for your work. Look forward to what the future is going to bring us. But thank you for the, for the work you've done to date.
John, I can't help but comment, it kind of sounds like a retirement party. You have no plans, right? Okay, very good.
President Stolka, can I just also?
Of course, I'm sorry.
And just say, you know, John has been a wonderful partner to me and, and really a standout in giving this office legal advice. He is there, I often joke with him that I talk to him more than I talk to my wife. We talk so frequently. But he's always there, like you said, day or night, weekends, whatever, whatever it may be. And I've just really enjoyed his counsel and the counsel of his office. And I agree, he's an incredible manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I could just say a few words. I do want to say thank you to the board and just sort of, I guess, note that the highest honor I've had in, frankly, in my, in my life, my professional career, my life generally, is to, to serve this, this county as a deputy, as a chief, and as the county attorney, not something when I was, you know, growing up in Prundale, I thought I, you know, would ever aspire to, frankly, is to, to have the opportunity to work so closely with dynamic, agile decision-makers who are, who are, you know, looking to do exciting things. It's one of the great things about San Mateo County is that we are blessed with leaders who are, again, sort of really interested in pushing the envelope. We don't do boring work in, in the office of the county attorney. It's because our, our clients are doing extraordinary, exciting things. And you all are really, you know, focused on, again, sort of trying to find really creative, dynamic, exciting ways to, to serve the public. And as a, as a resident of the county as well, it's doubly a privilege to, to hold the position I hold. And, you know, as I talk to my colleagues, what we, you know, what we aspire to is to be sort of a law firm that you would call, if you had a choice to call someone else. So that, you know, that's, as a government agency, I think that's, ought to be our focus, is you'd call us any day, even if you could call, you know, the biggest fanciest firms. And I'd like to think we're good at what we do. And I'm really, really pleased to, to hear the reflections on our responsiveness because, again, that's our, that's our goal, is to make sure you've got what you want when you, when you want it. So, again, I'm very appreciative of the confidence you've placed in me and in my office.
Thank you, John. I know John wouldn't talk about this next topic, but I just wanted to mention that John's, one of John's sons, Henry Niblin, who was an intern in my office a couple of years ago, has now graduated from law school and is preparing to take the bar exam. And I know John is very proud of Henry and his accomplishments. But you better watch out because he's smarter than you.
There's no doubt. There's no doubt. Thank you.
Very good. All right, public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand to comment for item six, a new agreement with the county attorney. No hands, Mr. President. Back to you.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the execution of a new agreement with John D. Niblin for his services as the county attorney for the next, for a new four-year term.
Second.
Take the roll call, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Kanapa and President Stolka.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you all. Move to item number seven, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the execution of a new agreement with Michael Calagie for his services as the county executive for a new four-year and seven-month term. You know, I can remember the day that Michael started as Mr. Malpys Deputy County Manager. And I knew from that day through today, obviously, that he was an exceptional executive with exceptional skills. And the thing that impresses me is Mike never walks away from a problem. He always addresses it head-on. I think he speaks the truth, he's fair with people. And I know he values the county's family of employees and everything that they do day in and day out. And just like John, when I call Mike, one time I called him and it turned out he, I knew he was on vacation, but he was actually on a cruise ship in the middle of somewhere. And he took my call and he was talking to me from the deck of the cruise ship, and we were solving problems. It was pretty amazing. And I, I do that enough that my wife has said, "Don't ever call him again when he's on vacation." So I promise, Mike, that not to do that. But I'm very pleased to bring this new contract with Mr. Calagie forward for another four years and seven months. The current contract that we have with Mr. Calagie is expiring in October. Mike has served as the county executive for six years. That's hard to believe now. And though, and through these years, he has solidified the county's community partnerships and relationships, prioritized employee engagement and wellness, and continues to lead the county's innovative approach to leveraging all of our resources. He demonstrates an exceptional leadership skill with the highest standards of integrity, customer service, and vision. He has successfully led the administration of the county, including seeing the county through the unique challenges of COVID-19, launching new housing units, including repurposing hotels and a new navigation center, which is an amazing achievement, and introduced a balanced two-year budget strategy. So in addition to receiving the compensation and benefits provided to other managers in the county, the provisions of this new contract would also include, number one, in order to avoid compaction issues, the county executive's salary will be 10% above the salary of the highest-paid appointed department head. And at present, this will result in a 4% increase to the county executive's current salary. And I might mention, this is in total keeping with our past practices and policies. And accrual of 12 hours of vacation time per period, per pay period, and increasing the county's contribution to Mr. Calagie's defined contribution plan from 6% to 9%. And next, an increase to his retiree health benefit, moving it from $400 to $800 to be used each month in retirement toward the cost of his monthly healthcare premiums. And lastly, severance pay. In the unlikely event of termination without cause in an amount equivalent to 12 months' salary or for the remaining time on his agreement, whichever is less. And so the bottom line is, this new agreement would retain Mr. Calagie's most outstanding service to the community and to this board and to the county through December of 2028. And with that, I'd open it up for board member comments. Mr. Mueller?
Yeah, Mike, this is well-deserved. When I think of this, I think the story I'd share was recently the governor was here to visit Cordillares. And the governor is, is walking, and he's complimenting Mike in the county on Cordillares. And, and in the middle of the compliment, Mike turns to him and starts to lay into him on the fact, "He's taking away our VLF." And, and the governor looks at him and looks at him and says, and I said, at that point, I walked up and I said, "How are you doing?" And he said, "Well, apparently, I'm taking all your money." And, and then during the press conference, when Mike was speaking, the governor turns to his right and looks at me and says, "You know, you have one of the best, if not the best, county executives in the state." And we have our VLF back, by the way, right now, which is so important. And I, you know, when I look, when I think of you, Mike, I think about the respect that you have. This is an incredibly large, complex organization, and the respect you have from every person in it and your team. It's, it really is something to behold. You recruit the best, the best want-to-come-back work here. Congresswoman Spear, after her long career, has said on many occasions, "I would not have been attracted to run for the Board of Supervisors again had it not been that you were the county executive." And so it's a great, it's, I'm, I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to continue to work with you here at the board.
Here, here. Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. Kind of to your point about our county executive being very brave and direct, I remember the first words that Mike Calagie ever said to me were, "Hey, you're the only one out of the candidates that hasn't reached out to me." And I laughed and I, and I said, "Mike, I'm truly sorry. It's really not personal." And I think now that he has gotten to know me well, he, he knows that that's true. But I just want to share that I truly admire your ability to kind of manage us as a team and take all of our different priorities and run with them. And even sometimes have to, you know, you do have to sometimes tell us, "Hey, not, not right now." And that's, that's what an amazing county, county executive does, right? You, you find ways to support the work that we want to do as a board. And, and you even, you know, you help us come together as a team as well. One of my passions is domestic violence work. And I know without a doubt that if I did not have your support and your participation at pretty much every single one of those meetings, that it wouldn't be moving as quickly as it has been. And I, you know, in the grand scheme of things, I know that at the end of the day, you truly care about everyone in this community. And I've heard that from folks who, you know, have served in different parts of this community and have said that had it not been for your willingness to listen, to, to truly care and be present with people, they would not, they would have left this county already or they would not have continued to be committed to doing the work of uplifting vulnerable communities here. So I just, you know, I want to thank you for your leadership and really happy to be able to vote on this today as well. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Supervisor Kanapa?
Mike, just thank you so much. Really appreciate the leadership. I think when we look at the capital that the county has been able to, to move forward with it, I think you and your team are a big part of that. I think it's to the tune of about $1.2 billion. I think, you know, as we, as we move forward, one of the things that we've been fortunate is that we've really had an incredible economy. And being able to, to balance budgets is, is, you know, a primary responsibility. We, we here at the Board of Supervisors, we don't manage the day-to-day functions of the, the institution. So we have to, to place our faith in the, the county executive's office as well as the people who report to, report to him. And I think over a period of years, the board has demonstrated the ability to really, to understand our finances, to spend within, within what we, what we can spend, especially relative to some of the great years in terms of the money we were able to put forth into our, into our pension. And so really looking forward to the next four years and what that brings us. I think the, the challenges, obviously, are going to be a potentially contracting budget, what that means for our workforce. We also have labor negotiations that will begin this year and then hopefully conclude this year. So a job well done, but I think we have a job moving forward for the next several years that is going to be extraordinarily, extraordinarily different than the budgets that we've dealt with in the past, and I'm cognizant of that. And so really looking forward to, to working with you and really looking forward to working with your staff. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Pine?
Mike, you're an extraordinary leader, and it's really been a privilege to work with you over the last six years. I particularly want to cite your ability to bring in great people in the county and to make really excellent management decisions in terms of personnel placement. You're, you're not afraid to take a chance on people and, and to look for the best and the brightest for the, these important positions in the county. And so your, 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 your team is a reflection of your, you know, extraordinary management abilities. And I want to thank you for, thank you for your service, and it's been a really a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you. We'll give Mr. Calagie the last word here.
Great. I just want to take this opportunity to thank all five of you. You're extraordinary people in what you do and, and how you care about this county and how you really think about the most vulnerable and the most needy in this county and everything that you do. Every single day, I get the honor of walking across the street into this building, and there's not a day that does not go by that I don't reflect upon the opportunities that we have as a county to break the mold of government, to set a new trend of doing, doing the way we do business. The ability to use innovation and to look at seemingly intractable problems and find solutions, that is what gets me out of bed every single day. I have a remarkable team that I get to work with. I value every single employee that works for the county and has chosen a life of public service. And I think it's so important that, that we honor them as much as we can. And certainly my team, I don't accomplish anything alone. I accomplish everything through the team that I have and through the policies that you have set and the direction that you have given me. And I just want you all to know that it is such an honor for me, a lifelong resident who started out the Holy Angels in Daly City in this county and has spent his entire educational experience in this county, his entire work time of almost 41 years of public service in this county. It is just an absolute honor to be in this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calagie. Appreciate it. We'll turn to public comment now.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have one speaker from chambers, Stefan Rinaldi.
Here today, I want to call attention to a application that Mike Calagie's office filed with California's Interagency Council of Homelessness. It's a $14 million grant they won to clear encampments on the freeways. In it, they have to talk about their permanent supportive housing, describe how harm reduction principles will be incorporated into the outreach interim housing if applicable and permanent housing aspects of this ERF project. Here's their answer. Our shelters and permanent supportive housing locations are low barrier. Sobriety is not required for services. People who are using substances will be supported in creating plans to reduce, but won't be required to do so. Folks, the La Quinta project sits less than 50 yards from a K-5 elementary school. Mike Calagie knows that people are going to be housed there with substance abuse issues, and they're going to be allowed to use drugs. I strongly tell you to reconsider what you're about to do today. And for the record, Mike Calagie and ECS went in front of Millbrae City Council on July 11th, 2023, promising the facility would be dry. It's a lie. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please proceed with the Zoom comments.
We have one hand raised for Carlisle Anne Young. Carlisle, please unmute and begin speaking.
Thank you, Sherry. I'm going to speak on behalf of this action and say that I think it's really important to retain a good leader when you find one. And I liked, it was interesting to hear Supervisor Mueller mentioning how he spoke truth to power when the governor was at the Cordillares facility and managed to get our VLF back. But hopefully, he heard my earlier comment during public comment about getting Caltrans to start serving our county better because we have just so many issues, not just the safety issue that, you know, killed our mayor's son in Hapun Bay a few weeks ago, but also just so much trash along the side of the road, weeds, signs that are all dirty, that sort of thing. I don't know who else would be better equipped to get Caltrans to do something. So hopefully, you'll be able to do that, and thank you for everything else that you've done. It's been a pleasure knowing you. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlisle. No further hands, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. So at this point, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the execution of a new agreement with Michael Calagie for his services as the county executive for a new four-year and seven-month term. Thank you.
Roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Kanapa? President Stolka?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, just a reminder that at 3 o'clock today, there's, we're having our Service Awards that honors employees for various lengths of county service. um, that honors, uh, employees for various lengths of, uh, county service. That'll be held at the Regional Op- Operations Center, which is known as The Rock, and the Training Room, 501 Winslow Street, Redwood City. And there's also a live stream for that. Turn our attention now to the regular agenda, um, which is, I, it starts with item number nine, and it's to adopt a resolution authorizing an agreement to the master salary resolution zero seven nine eight one two to adjust the salary of classification B two oh seven and, um, our Director of HR is going to give us some information on this.
Yes, thank you, President Salkum. Good morning, President Salkum, members of the board, Mr. Calagie, Mr. Niblin, Ms. Rodriguez. I'm Rosio Kirkson, the HR Director for the county. The item before you corresponds with the county executive's employment contract that your board just approved. We are requesting to amend the master salary resolution to adjust the county executive's salary. As President Salkum mentioned earlier, the county executive's new contract states that his salary will be at least, uh, ten percent above the salary of his direct reports, uh, which is in alignment and consistent with the county practices. Uh, currently, the county executive's salary is just, uh, six percent above the highest paid department head. Therefore, the salary, uh, will be adjusted by four percent, uh, to address any compaction issues. Thanks to your board's consideration, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from members? There being none, we'll turn our attention to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand in Zoom to comment for item number nine and amendment to the master salary resolution. No comments, Mr. President.
Thank you. This, uh, one of, one of the members wanna make a motion on this item.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon? And President Salkum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. Item number ten, adopt a resolution authorizing an agreement with Everwell Health Systems LLC for residential services, services for clients with mental illness for the term of July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven in an amount not to exceed seven million, five hundred ninety-nine thousand and eighteen dollars. Mr. Africa.
Uh, good morning, Su- uh, Board of Supervisors, uh, county execs and community. So this item before you is really a three-year agreement with Everwell Health Systems for out-of-county beds, uh, for residents, for San Mateo County residents who have severe mental illness and co-occurring, and a co-occurring diagnosis. Um, Everwell, uh, is a licensed residential facility that provides housing, treatment and rehab, rehabilitation services, including the provision of meals, assistance with activities of daily living, medication support, and social skill development. And as you know, licensed residential facilities are decreasing in California. Um, we are seeing this actually locally as well. Um, and that's why we are needing to contract with providers that are out of county to ensure that our residents have, um, um, a, a place to, uh, uh, get services. Um, so, uh, residential facilities really avoid most more costly acute and subacute psychiatric hospitalization. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from members on item ten? No questions. Um, public comment?
Thank you. Uh, no comments from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand to comment for item ten, Everwell Health Systems Agreement. No comments, Mr. President.
Very good. Uh, motion, please. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Thank you, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon? And President Salkum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, adopt a resolution authorizing an agreement with Our Common Ground Incorporated for Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services for the term July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in an amount not to exceed seven million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, the, uh, this agreement with, um, Our Common Ground is really to provide a wide range of services for those who have substance use issues, um, uh, in our county. And services include, um, they're actually providing a wide range of services, including um, outpatient services, intensive outpatient services, and residential services. OCG has, as what we know them, has provided services for this county for over twenty years. And because of the breadth of services they provide, um, they really remain to be, um, an important part of our network of care. Um, OCG also uses evidence-based practices, including motivational interviewing, um, cognitive behavioral therapy, and trauma-based, um, interventions. I wanna just emphasize that OCG operates recovery ser- recovery residences and sober living environment, environments, uh, which provides, um, housing resources to those in need, specifically those that need substance, substance use services. They are really very critical, um, in, in our county. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, members? No questions? Public com- oop, Supervisor, no. Public comment?
Sure. Uh, no comments from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand to comment for item number eleven, health agreement with Our Common Ground. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Thank you. Roll call.
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller? Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on. Is anybody needing a break for a minute or two?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break if that's okay.
The board is currently in recess. The time is eleven seventeen AM. Thank you. Okay, the board is back in open session. The time is now eleven thirty-one AM and all the supervisors are present. Please proceed. President Salkum?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We're, we're on item number twelve, which is the Mez- Measure K Adopt a Resolution item. Um, it's to appro- approving commitments of Affordable, the Affordable Housing Fund, AHF, uh, twelve-point-zero funds to the construction of the non-moving-to-work affordable housing projects listed in Attachment A to the resolution as further set forth, uh, on the board's agenda here. Mr. Hodges?
Thank you, President Salkum, and, uh, good morning, honorable board members, Mr. Calagie, Mr. Niblin, and Ms. Rodriguez. I'm Ray Hodges. I'm the Director at the County's Department of Housing. Uh, happy to be here to talk about the twelfth round of the Affordable Housing Fund. And I'm joined today by Jan Stokely, one of our Housing and Community Development Supervisors on the DOH team. So the department recently completed its review of applications for the twelfth round of the Affordable Housing Fund competition. Um, the AHF, uh, was initiated back in twenty thirteen using, uh, RDA boomerang funds at first. And since that time, we've commu- we've committed more than a quarter of a billion dollars of county resources to new construction and preservation of affordable homes. And the biggest, um, source of funding that we've used, uh, in that quarter of a billion dollars is, of course, Measure K sales tax proceeds. The Affordable Housing Fund is also the vehicle we use to disperse other local, state, and federal resources um, for affordable housing development. And that includes funds made available by our county's housing authority, which, um, we have on the docket today to discuss too. Since launching the AHF, we've committed funds to build or preserve four thousand, seven hundred and fifty affordable homes. And twen- two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five of those are complete with another six hundred and forty currently in construction. And because of the pipeline we've created through the AHF, we can expect those totals to increase by a few hundred units each year, um, going forward, as long as we can fund the process at this level. So, um, AHF twelve made available just over twenty-four million dollars from various county sources. The biggest source of funding in that, of course, is Measure K, just over twenty. Um, other sources included federal community development block grant funds, federal home funds, county impact fees. We had a special set aside of Measure K from the Human Services Agency that's targeted at developing affordable homes for former foster youth. And in addition to the county resources, our housing authority is dedicating sixteen point five million dollars of moving-to-work reserve funds to the AHF twelve competition. That's subject to HUD approval of the agency's, uh, moving-to-work plan this summer. And your authorization to submit our draft plan to HUD for approval is the, that's the subject of the next item on the board's agenda today. So we received fifteen applications requesting about three times the total of forty point five million dollars we had to award this year. Four applications of the fifteen came short of meeting the threshold requirements, so we reviewed eleven. Um, and of those eleven that met thresholds, seven were selected to receive a funding award. The eleven applications are all strong proposals. They're geographically distributed all across the county. Um, and in some, they requested about fifty million dollars more than we had to awards that made for some difficult decisions. DOH staff reviewed and scored all of the proposals. Um, and we provided our recommendations to the county's Housing and Community Development Committee for their review. The HCDC held a study session to review staff's recommendations, and then a week later, they held a, a public hearing and heard presentations from each of the eleven applicants. The committee in the end concurred with staff's recommendations and our, our joint plan for the awards under this round of the Affordable Housing Fund is what we're presenting today for your approval. This is the list. It's hard to, a little hard to read on this screen, but, um, the seven recommended proposals include six new construction rental, uh, projects, um, and one new construction homeownership development. And in some, across the seven, it represents four hundred and thirty-one affordable homes. The projects target some of the county's highest priority populations, homeless veterans, homeless seniors, uh, other home, other people experiencing homelessness, farm workers, large families, low-income seniors, and persons with other special needs. Award recommendations are based on several criteria and readiness to be competitive for other financing in the very near future was kind of at the top of our list um, for scoring and in our considerations. Most importantly, um, competitive competitiveness for applying for low-income housing tax credits this summer at the state. And that, those tax credits are usually the last source of funding in a project before they can start construction. We can tee projects up to compete, um, well for those credits this summer we wanna do so. It's the second column, uh, from right in the chart shows the recommended awards county funds. The first four projects on the list were selected based on determination that these projects would be competitive for the state, uh, for the federal and state tax credits this summer with an award of AHF twelve funding. The fifth project was selected after determining that our award would make the project really competitive for federal HUD two oh two program funds, which funds capital development and rental assistance for projects that target low-income seniors. So we're excited about that one. The sixth project was selected based on readiness and really exceptional affordability for a low-income homeownership project. Uh, and the seventh was recommended for a small award that was requested to assist that applicant with pre-development funding. So, uh, of the seven projects recommended for funding, the, uh, three would receive the bulk of their funding allocations from the, from our housing authority. And those awards are listed in the, again, at the second column from the right on this adjusted slide. We don't expect HUD to approve our moving-to-work plan until late July or August. So, um, the moving-to-work funds are targeted to projects that can wait until that time to utilize those funds. They don't need it in July. Whereas the first two projects, uh, um, on this list are applying for nine percent tax credits um, on July second, so they needed county funding to make that application deadline. DOH, uh, and the HCDC did not recommend awards for the proposals listed here. There's four of them. All of these projects satisfied our threshold requirements. Um, they're fundamentally sound and we, and they propose important community benefits. So we're supportive of all four, but it was determined that they were less likely than the others to compete successfully for tax credits and other funding sources, even if we made them the award right now. We're encouraging all four to continue working with our team at DOH and, and come back to us for funding in the, in the future if needed. But, um, because of the importance of those four projects and, and others that may not have passed threshold, um, that we couldn't fund in this round, the department and the HCDC recommended that we recover AHF twelve awards from projects that don't satisfy their conditions of funding. So in particular, the four that will apply for tax credits this summer, um, and they'll apply in July or August, and as a condition of their award, we would want them to obtain those tax credits. Um, rather than waiting for the AHF thirteen round to come around, uh, to this board next summer, we propose implementing a mini NOFA, where we'll award, uh, funds that we claw back from any projects that don't receive the tax credits or other, other funding, uh, applications at that time. So, um, this would provide a potential for projects not funded today to compete for an award and apply for tax credits this coming February, um, or March, so they don't have to wait all the, wait until next summer, um, for the AHF thirteen round. And with this strategy, we hope to stretch our resources to the fullest extent and maximize the number of projects we can tee up for tax credits and get into construction in the next year. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jan Stokely, who's gonna give a quick summary of each of the seven projects that we're recommending for funding.
Good morning. I'll be really brief and just give you some of the highlights of each project. The first project you see on the screen, Hill Street Apartments, sponsored by Link Housing, um, is recommended to receive an award in the total amount of seven million dollars coming from Measure K and our permanent local housing allocation funds. Uh, this is a thirty-seven unit rental proj- project in a, a very central location in Belmont. Um, it's targeting two populations. Eighteen of the units will, uh, house people with disabilities, severe mental and physical disabilities referred by county health. Um, and they will have project-based vouchers with a deep level of affordability. Um, the other half of the units will target families, um, in two- and three-bedroom units, and their affordability range will be from thirty percent to eighty percent. The AHF twelve award will be conditioned on the project applying for and receiving an award of nine percent tax credits from an application due on July second. So this is one of those projects that Ray mentioned that we would be clawing back if they're not successful and making available to others. Um, the next project you're familiar with, Cypress Point in Moss Beach, um, is recommended to receive an award in the total amount of just over twelve million dollars from two county sources, Measure K and county impact fees. This project provides seventy-one units of affordable housing, eighteen units for farm workers, and fifty-five units for large families. Um, the project represents the culmination of several years of community engagement resulting in final approval of the project by the Board of Supervisors in March. Um, in addition to meeting the county requirement that at least five percent of the units be targeted to people experiencing homelessness, seventy-five percent of the units will be subject to a preference for people who live or work on the coast side. Again, this project's award will be subject to the condition that it apply for and receive an award of nine percent housing tax credits on July second. Next up, the Ridge at Ralston, another Belmont project. Um, this is sponsored by Abode Housing and CRP Affordable. It's recommended to receive a county award of a million dollars in home funds and from the housing authority, a three million dollar award of moving-to-work reserve funds. Um, this new construction project will create sixty-five affordable units on Ralston Avenue near the, uh, the Belmont Caltrain Station and very close to shopping and services. Um, the project will provide seventeen units of housing for people experiencing homelessness. Um, and, uh, some of those, uh, families will have access to larger two- and three-bedroom units and families experiencing homelessness is a growing need in our county, so we're happy to have those unit sizes for people experiencing homelessness. Um, more than half of the units in this project will address a priority need for two- and three-bedroom units. Um, this project's award of AHF twelve funds will be subject to the condition that the applicant apply for and receive an award of four percent tax credits, which will be due on August twenty-seventh. Next up, we have four-nine-three Eastmore Project in Daly City, sponsored by Core Affordable. Um, this project is recommended to receive an award of eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars from county Measure K for former foster youth, and then an additional eight point six million from moving-to-work reserve funds. Um, the project consists of seventy-two units of deeply affordable rental housing with thirty-six of the units supported by project-based vouchers from our housing authority. Sixteen of the units will target housing for healthy California, uh, residents who are referred by health and MHSA. They're chronically homeless or homeless and high healthcare users. The project will also provide eleven units of housing for people served under the Mental Health Services Act and referred by Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Um, and this project will also apply for four percent tax credits on August twenty-seventh. And if not successful with this application, their AHF twelve funds would be, uh, clawed back. Um, Rotary Gardens is a project in South San Francisco, sponsored by Rod- Rotary Gardens is a project in South San Francisco, sponsored by Rotary of South San Francisco and Beacon Development. This team has developed prior affordable housing for seniors in South San Francisco and has a good track record. They're recommended to receive an award from two county sources, Community Development Block Grant and Measure K, and also an award from the Housing Authorities Moving-to-Work Reserve Funds. They'll receive approximately $6.6 million in total. The 80-unit project is targeted to low-income seniors with 10 units for homeless seniors and additional 10 units for frail elderly. The team has acquired the site and has received funding commitments from the Rotary and the city, and AHF-12 award at this time would make the project more competitive for HUD 202 funding. This is an important resource because it will enable seniors to pay rent of about $300 a month if successful. So this project's AHF-12 award will be subject to applying for and receiving the HUD 202 award that we're supporting their, them to apply for. Next up is Independence Drive, a project of Habitat for Humanity. It's 18 units of first-time homeownership. What's extraordinary about this project is the deep level of affordability and the very favorable terms that are being provided to homeowners. These are large family units, three and four bedrooms. They'll be affordable to families with very low incomes. They'll offer a zero-down payment mortgage, 3% interest, and really exceptionally, each family's monthly housing costs will be limited to 30% of their actual household income. The city of Menlo Park has already invested in the project, and the developer of the adjoining market rate project has provided land and infrastructure, and it's, again, the project is exceptional in the depth of affordability reached in a homeownership project. This project's award will be subject to executing a property donation agreement with the market rate developer. And then last up, to receive an award is Cerro Monte del Rey in Daly City, sponsored by Eden Housing. This project's recommended to receive an award of $300,000 to assist with pre-development expenses. It's on the site of the former campus of the Cerro Monte del Rey High School on land owned by the, the High School District. It's 100% affordable housing. That's part of a new master plan neighborhood sponsored by the High School District, and the neighborhood will be home to a total of more than 1,300 new homes. The 88 units supported in this project will include large family units, a number of two- and three-bedroom units, units targeted for people experiencing intellectual and developmental disabilities, receiving services from the Golden Gate Regional Center, and also units for people experiencing homelessness. The project will include a Head Start Center and will have some rents affordable to Head Start income-eligible families. The project's precise plan has already been approved by the city of Daly City and a small pre-development award of $300,000, but enabled the project to move forward and assemble financing. That's the last one.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Board member questions? Any here, any there? No questions? So we could turn to public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
On Zoom, please click raise hand to comment for item number 12 regarding the Affordable Housing Fund. We have one hand raised for Carlisle and Young. Carlisle, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I just have a question for the last speaker regarding Cypress Point. I went to almost every single one of the public meetings, and this is the first time I've ever heard that it's for homeless as well as farm workers and low income. Could you please repeat what you said about homeless people and how, what's the percentage?
Oh, Carlisle, well, this isn't a Q and A, but you could use your time to finish your comment.
I don't have a comment. I'm just wondering what she said, because maybe she misspoke, but thank you. I guess she's not going to repeat it. Thank you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because you still had time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, that was the last speaker.
All right. Mr. Hodges, I actually have a question. I'm curious, in any of these developments, has the idea of rent to own ever come up or been discussed, or what, what can you tell me just here briefly about that idea?
No, not, well, not in the, in the six rental projects that are recommended for funding. The way the regulations work for most of the financing that's included in the funding stack for the projects, the way the regulations work for the most, and most importantly, the tax credits wouldn't, wouldn't allow for homeownership.
Okay.
The one project we have, of course, with Habitat is a straight homeownership, but the others.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Question, Mr. Mueller?
I do have a question, but I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead. I'm finished.
I actually did want to follow up by, to, to address the point raised by the, by, by Ms. Young.
Yeah, a quarter of the units are set aside for farm workers, and then the kind of baseline minimum requirement that we have in our Affordable Housing Fund is that five units are set aside for homeless households. So it's here that equates to four units, so there's four set aside for homeless families.
Thank you.
At Cypress Point.
Very good. Other questions? No. All right, so I think we're ready for a motion, Mr. Clerk.
That's correct, yes.
Does somebody want to make this motion here?
I'll make a motion to, to move A, B, and, A and B.
Second.
I'll take the roll call. Mr. President Pine?
Yes.
Mr. Corzo?
Yes.
Mr. President Mueller?
Yes.
Mr. President Canepa?
Yes.
And President Slocum?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 13 is acting as the governing board of commissioners for the Housing Authority of the County of San Mateo, conduct a public hearing to consider the 2425 Moving-to-Work Annual Plan. And here we'll open a public hearing, close a public hearing, and hear a presentation. Mr. Hodges.
Yes. Good morning again, honorable board members, President Slocum, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, Ms. Rodriguez, Ray Hodges, here now as executive director of our county's housing authority to talk for a moment about our moving-to-work plan for the next fiscal year. Our county's housing authority is one out of only 139 in the country. There's 3,300 housing authorities across the country, and we're one of 139 that have moving-to-work status. And each year, your board must take public comment and authorize submission of our draft moving-to-work plan to HUD for final approval. The moving-to-work designation gives our Housing Authority flexibility to test out locally-designed programs and, and request permission to HUD to do that. The programs have to be focused on increasing administrative efficiencies, encouraging self-sufficiency, and increasing housing choice for clients. So over time, we've incorporated and administered 36 special programs that we call MTW activities that have been approved by your board and HUD. One of those activities is our landlord incentive program, which provides financial incentives to encourage new landlords to take part in our rental assistance programs and to encourage landlords to re-rent units when they become vacant to new clients referred by the Housing Authority. We also created what we call a provider-based assistance program, which allocates rental subsidy to nonprofits for targeted populations they serve that don't fit particularly well within the regulations of the, the Section 8 program. In last year's plan, we doubled the size of that program from three contractors to six, adding three new programs that serve unhoused persons, persons with mental illnesses and, and households at risk of becoming homeless. The one program we do intend to amend this year in the plan is our existing approval to shift Section 8 program reserves to support affordable housing development projects in the county's affordable housing pipeline. So over the last decade, we've received approvals to utilize a total of $35 million in reserves for affordable housing development. Those funds are all committed, and the majority of those funds are out the door spent in projects right now. But through this year's plan, we're requesting authorization to increase that number by another $30 million in HAP funds for affordable housing development. We don't have to immediately allocate all the funding to projects and programs, and we, we actually don't have enough in reserve right now to responsibly do so. But as you heard in the last presentation, looking at the AHF awards, we're recommending immediately allocating $16.5 million of these funds to three of the projects in the, in the AHF this year. The funding wouldn't be available until HUD approves the MTW plan, but we'll condition those awards on the Housing Authority receiving that approval. The remaining 13 and a half million of the 30 to be allocated gives us flexibility to make allocations if and when the Housing Authority has the capacity to do so, and we don't have to wait for a new fiscal year MTW plan presentation and approval from HUD to do so. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and then we, like you said, we need to take a, a public hearing for comment on the plan.
Questions? Board? No questions. Without objection, can we open a public hearing now? Without objection? Okay. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Clerk?
No comments received from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand in Zoom for item 13, Moving-to-Work Annual Plan. Final call for public comment on item 13 before we close the public hearing. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Very good. Without objection, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll take a motion. Moved and seconded, Mr. Clerk.
Sure. Mr. President Pine? Thank you. Mr. President Corzo?
Yes.
Mr. President Mueller?
Yes.
Mr. President Canepa? And President Slocum?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Item number 14, acting as the governing board of the 10 county sewer maintenance and sanitation districts, we're going to conduct a public hearing on this matter. I'm not sure, this is Ann Stillman, I'm sure, right? Yeah, okay. Director Stillman.
Can be sure that if it's sewers, it will be me? All right. Good morning, President Slocum, honorable, honorable members of the board, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Rodriguez, and Mr. Niblin. He's teasing me, right? That I do have slides that were sent yesterday on this fascinating topic of sewer rates and sewer charges, but I can start without my visual aids. All right, so I am before you today. We have 10 sewer and sanitation districts. They vary in location and size, all the way up to Burlingame Hill Sewer Maintenance District, down to the Fair Oaks Sewer Maintenance District. I was before you previously on April 9th, I believe it was, when I presented rates for the Burlingame Hill Sewer Maintenance District and the Crystal Springs County Sanitation District. We, each district is independent district, it has its own separate budget, and the sewer rates that are set are used to calculate the sewer service charges, which is the money or the revenue to be able to support the operations of the districts. We levy the sewer service charges on the tax bill, as it is the least costly way for us to do it, hence the timing of sewer service charges. In 2021, rates were set for the Burlingame Hill Sewer Maintenance District and the Crystal Springs County Sanitation District through this fiscal year, and today we are talking once again about setting the rates. There we go. Just click through to catch up with where I am. That was the map showing all of our sewer and sanitation districts and the sizes, some of what I just went over about the different districts that we have, and then I was talking about this, which was the rates that were set previously and the fact that we presented or introduced rates for those two districts for four fiscal years. And these rates are to pay for anticipated increases in the operations and maintenance of the district and sewage treatment, capital improvement projects, and repayment of loans to those particular districts. Sewer service charges, which the, which are calculated based on the rates, pay for the operations and maintenance of the sewer collection system, repairs and replacement of aging pipes, inspection and assessment of pipe conditions, emergency response, 24/7 to clear blockages and clean up any overflows, operations and maintenance costs at the wastewater treatment plant, improvements to the wastewater treatment plants, and compliance with local, state, and federal regulations. Some, a couple of specifics to the Burlingame Hill Sewer Maintenance District. The rates need to be able to pay back some of the outstanding loans that the district has. So there's a state revolving fund loan, which has an annual payment. We did use a lot of the fund balance to pay for a big sewer project, the Hillside Drive Adeline Project, and the county was generous to give the district a general fund loan, which we have payments on every year as well. And then specific to the Crystal Springs County Sanitation District, the sewage from that district flows to the city of San Mateo Wastewater Treatment Plant. They have a large clean water program, clean water program to improve a lot of infrastructure, but also a lot of work at the wastewater treatment plant. It's a billion dollars' worth of work, and the district's share of that is quite a bit. And we are working with the city to be able to put financing in place so that the payments by this district will be at a, a, a rate that we can anticipate each year, and it will be constant for 30 years. A future agreement will be coming to the board for, for that particular agreement. But these are some of the major, like, the larger, specific costs to these particular districts that the rates need to cover. So talking about the rates, the introduction of the rates took place on April 9th, and we introduced the rates for the Burlingame Hill Sewer Maintenance District, the Crystal Springs County Sanitation District. We set today as the second reading of the ordinance and also for the public hearing to consider the rates for those two districts. So part of that process would be to have a public hearing, consider whether there are any protests to the rates, and then hopefully approve the rates for the, for fiscal years as we've recommended. These are just a, this is a slide showing what the proposed rates are. So it shows the current rates for this fiscal year and the proposed rates in the two districts, and shows what the increases, proposed increases are. This is what you saw on April 9th as well. And then in terms of protests, we've been tracking the protests, and to date, we received two protests for the, in the Crystal Springs County Sanitation District about raising the rates. Moving on to the charges, this is the other part of this action and the work that we have right now, is, as I mentioned, the sewer service charges are based on the rates, and, but our code requires that we have a public hearing to consider whether there are any objections or protests to the particular charges. And then we would be seeking approval of the sewer service charges report for fiscal year 2425. This is a slide showing you what the rates, the proposed rates for Burlingame and Crystal Springs, just it's in a different color, because that's part of this action here today. But then the other rates were set previously for the other eight districts. So those are shown in a different color, and the charges would be based on those rates. And that's it. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Questions from members? No questions. Mr. Clerk? Public comment?
We just need to open.
Oh, yeah, okay. So without objection, we'll open the public comment. Is that okay? Okay, the public, public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand to comment for item 14 for sewer rates for Burlingame Hills and Crystal Springs. Final call before we close public hearing for item 14. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Without objection, we'll close the public hearing. We'll take a motion, please. Thank you. Moved and seconded, roll call.
Mr. President Pine? Thank you, Mr. President Corzo?
Yes.
Mr. President Canepa? And President Slocum?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item 15, acting as the governing board of County Service Area 1, conduct a public hearing to set the rate of the special parcel tax for extended police and structural fire services in County Service Area 1 for fiscal year 2425 at $65 per parcel.
Who is?
Thank God, take that. Thank you, President Slocum. The Highlands area, as well as Baywood Park and the Palmas Heights, have for many years in place a special parcel tax to fund enhanced police and fire services. And the way this tax is structured is that each year, the Board of Supervisors has to authorize the maximum amount of the tax, and the board has, has set that at $65 with community approval for many, many years now. So this is a really routine item to set that maximum tax at $65.
Okay. Any questions? There being none, we'll, without objection, open the public hearing. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, the public hearing is now open. No comments from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand for item 15 regarding a special parcel tax in County Service Area Number 1. Final call for item 15 before we Final call for item 15 before we close public hearing. No comments, Mr. President. Back to you.
Thank you. Without objection, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion. I'll move approval. Moved and seconded, Mr. Clerk.
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Kanapa? And President Sokum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Move on to item 16, which is Adopt a Resolution to, A, minimum, adopt minimum road standards for future road improvements in the Menlo Oaks area, and B, a priority list to be used to determine the priority of future road improvements in the Menlo Park area. I'm assuming this is Director Stillman also.
Yes. Okay. Good afternoon, President Sokum, honorable members of the board, Callagie, Ms. Rodriguez, and Mr. Niblin. I am here to present information on proposed road standards for the Menlo Oaks area and also a priority list. Go over some of the slides I have. This is the Menlo Oaks area. It is bound by the City of Menlo Park and also the town of Atherton. It is unique in that there are schools in close proximity to the area, and it also has a unique character to the neighborhood in terms of narrower streets and lots of street trees in the area. Just a little bit of background, in the past, in the 90s, 1998, the Department of Public Works surveyed folks in the Menlo Oaks area to see whether they wanted road standards. And the response that we got back was no, they didn't want road standards or the road improved. And so what the Board of Supervisors did was they adopted the current road standards, which is to maintain the existing roads, including the widths and the limits of the road widths, limits of the road widths, maintain the existing roads in their existing configurations, and really minimize the, kind of the level of effort in terms of improving. So just maintain as is. That has been in place, I think the math is, you know, it's been in place for a while, from 1998 to 2022. And in 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved about 200, approved $250,000 of Measure K money so that we could revisit the road standards and determine whether the property owners in the Menlo Oaks area would be in favor of a different road standard for their area. I want to point out that Ringwood and Coleman Avenue were not included in our work to develop road standards or explore whether road standards were preferred. They are instead the subject of a separate effort and study that is being managed by the Sustainability Department, and that is in part that they are unique roads. They're also roads that are included in the county's active transportation plan, and they really warrant, because of the unique nature of the roads, they warrant their own study and public outreach process. So as shown in this map, the green roads are Ringwood and Coleman. They were not included in the work we did to determine any interest in road standards. Instead, we focused on the blue roads there, which is seven roads in the Menlo Oaks area that are county maintained roads, to understand what the property owners' desires would be. This is a little bit faded out, but this is a, my pronoun, it's very green to show all the properties that were included in the survey. It was very comprehensive. We developed a survey and sent it out to the property owners. It covered a lot or most of the properties within the Menlo Oaks area, and as I mentioned, because Coleman and Ringwood were not included in the study, those properties and property owners that were only adjacent to those two roads were not included or surveyed on the road standard that they might prefer for their particular road. This is just a general description of some of the work we did in terms of our process. So we conducted field survey of all of the existing roads, the seven roads that I talked about, so we can see the locations of different improvements in the areas, the slopes of the road, you know, trees, road condition, et cetera. We developed road standards that we believe were considered the neighborhood's unique characteristics. We engaged with the community through notices and property owner survey and meetings to gather input and answer questions and address concerns. We developed a project website where we posted all relevant information. We had meetings, we recorded the meetings, we've posted them there. We have our presentations posted there, and all letters that went out to the property owners are posted there as well. And we tabulated the survey results to determine whether there were desires for preferred road standards on a road-by-road basis, and then also to come up with a priority list for those roads in which the property owners were in favor of different road standards. In terms of community engagement, we held three different community meetings. These were all held virtually at night to provide more flexibility for those that could attend. We also have a subscriber for email updates on our website. We have about 313 subscribers, and anytime we post something on our project website, those are alerted to the fact that we've posted something new on our website. As I mentioned, we've posted all information on that website too, so that it's easily accessible, and if people want to go back and look at things, they certainly can. And then we've worked really hard to be responsive to the community questions, and there were a lot. And also, you know, we got questions during meetings, we got questions in emails, phone calls, and really worked to track all those questions and provide comprehensive responses. In terms of our process and our timeline, we sent out the survey to property owners on November 13th. We prepared frequently asked questions and responses. We've posted that on our website. We had a second meeting on December 6th to provide people additional information, answer questions, just if there were any questions about the survey and how to answer it and what it meant, or just understanding it. We wanted to ensure that before the surveys were due on the 15th of December, everybody really had all the information they needed to be able to voice their opinion and cast their vote. We also gave people an opportunity to, if they had submitted their vote before the community meeting on December 6th, if they wanted to revise their vote based on what they heard during the meeting, we gave them that opportunity as well. We had an excellent response rate, which ranged from 78 to 100% on the roads, which I think is demonstrating that we have a community that's very engaged in, with roads and road standards, but really value their neighborhood. With those seven streets that we surveyed, five of the seven streets and the property owners' responses indicated that they were in favor of road standards. I just wanted to give you a picture of, for every street, we went through a process like this in which we, and this is available on our website too in the presentations, but we took pictures of each street and tried to document existing conditions, walk people through what options one and two would look like with different 16-foot wide roads, with different sized valugaters on the outside, then options three and four, another picture so that people could kind of get a better sense for what things might look like depending on their voting, and then finally, options five and six. Getting to the survey results, this information has been distributed as well and shared with the public, but I wanted to share this with you so you can see of the surveys that we sent. So total surveys are second column from the left, and see road by road. You can see how the responses were in terms of yes votes for desire for road improvements, no votes, and then those that did not respond. And those that did not respond were considered as no votes when we did the final tabulation. And you can see those at the bottom. The roads at the bottom are really in favor of no improvements, maintain as is. And this is just a summary with a little bit less detail, but it shows you that we had six options that were presented, six options plus maintain as is, to all of the property owners. You can see that everybody is in alignment, or the responses we've received really were in alignment in terms of how they viewed the options. The narrowest option being option one, and every street, the property owners really echoed the same thing. I think that's really interesting and definitely very telling. The standards that we're presenting today for your consideration would be options one through four for the five out of the seven streets that are interested in road improvements or road standards. Maintain as is is always an option. When we do future surveys, if people decide at a later date that they're not in favor of road improvements, they always have an option for maintain as is. And those roads at the bottom of that last slide that I shared with you that are not in favor of road improvements, we will continue to, we'll work on those roads and schedule pavement preservation projects, continue to crack seal, patch, and maintain the roads. Coupled with this is a priority list, because road standards is one part of it, but understanding how to tackle it and how to prioritize the roads for work, because we cannot work on all roads at one time, is another element to what we're asking you to consider today. So for the five roads, we've looked at the different categories. Drainage being the first category. The Menlo Oaks area does not have a formal underground storm drain system. Everything is surface drainage. So there are areas right now, of course, when it rains, just the water flows, but there are also areas of ponding. So drainage was a concern voiced by people. We are not including the construction of a formal drainage system that would take water away from the area, but we will have to work with the stormwater as we deal with this project and find ways to infiltrate it under the roadway. Pavement condition or PCI is another priority that we looked at, and then proximity to school and public facilities. And this is how those roads then ranked based on our analysis and our prioritization. You can see one through five. That would be our proposal for the priority list. And that is part of our recommendation today. With our projects, we have many county areas where we've adopted road standards and a priority list, and our process always, that always is, that when a road is up and considered for improvement, we always survey property owners on that road on a block-by-block basis to reaffirm that they're in favor of road improvements and be able to let us know which ones they're in favor of. This is where options one through four would come in, as well as maintain as is, or do not do road improvements. With that, we always have a public meeting with those property owners. We go over more details about what we see in their roads, some of the specific nuances of it, and give them an opportunity to ask us questions and get more information. And like I said, people always have the opportunity to select maintain as is, I don't want a road improvement. And sometimes that does happen when we do these subsequent, subsequent surveys, road by road. In terms of adopt road standards, we would be looking at, if the road standards were adopted, we would be working on one road at a time. We're really looking at design at 2027 and the first road project in 2028, just based on the money that's available and the workload that we have, and we would continue to perform maintenance activities in terms of pothole repairs, crack sealing for all the roads that are on the priority list if it were adopted. And then for maintain as is, we would work to incorporate these roads into future pavement preservation projects, which are more like seal projects. Right now, the next plan for a project that could include that area could be 2028 possibly, and then subsequent seals in future out years is possible. But we would continue to maintain the roads that elected for maintain as is during, for this survey, continue to maintain them in terms of pothole repairs and crack sealing. So the recommendation is to adopt the proposed road standards that we've presented and the priority list, and as I mentioned, any of these roads that would be considered for future improvement would involve future property owner surveys on a street-by-street basis to ensure or determine that property owners are still in favor of road improvements, and also giving them the option to say no to road improvements and maintain their roads as is. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you for that extensive review. Appreciate it. Are there any board member questions at this point? No questions. Here's what I'd like to do on this matter, if it's okay with you colleagues. Like to give each side five minutes to make their case. We could ask questions or not, but I'm not sure if all parties are here. There's a group called Moda. Are they here? Or are they?
Supervisor Sokum?
Yeah.
Moda is not a party. Moda is simply the neighborhood social organization.
Right. I understand.
Eric Moda is not involved in this process.
Okay.
President of Moda is here, he can make a comment for it.
Well, no, I just, excuse me. I just want to give you five minutes. If you want to talk, that's fine. If not, that's fine too.
I think there are groups around both sides who would be willing to speak.
Okay. Okay.
So, Mr. President, were you proposing that as an advocate or a spokesperson for Moda would be given five minutes if Moda wanted to take a position like that? But somebody perhaps who was contrary to the, to the road standards. I know I've heard a lot from, for example, Mr. Danforth. I don't know if he was somebody you had in mind who might speak for five minutes, and then other folks would have a minute to speak. Is that what you were proposing?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. Is that, colleagues, does that strike you as okay? Okay.
So, I just want to make one comment. So Moda is not on one side or another. Moda is the neighborhood itself. So there are parties that are for, and there are parties that against. But Moda is the community itself. I wanted to make sure people knew that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to contradict that. Yeah. So.
Well, sir, wait. We're going to have five minutes. If you want to talk, fine, or you can have a minute later on, but I would like to give each party five minutes here right now. Is Mr. Danforth here?
Yeah, but why is he here? He doesn't represent any of us.
Yeah, well, that's the way it is.
Can I just say one thing?
Go ahead.
One thing, I'd just like to say one thing, a point of clarification.
What did you say?
Maybe you should just give them each a minute.
Yeah. My name's John Danforth, and before my five minutes start, I want to thank the board, but I also want to put on my jacket, because I was trained that when you talk to a board supervisor, you need a jacket. So here's my plan. Have we started?
I'll start the five minutes, okay?
I shrunk my comments down to one minute, but I also had a kind of a modular approach, and I want to walk you through a set of slides that are being distributed right now after I do my one-minute-plus-or-minus-quick description. So I'll go very quickly, and I want to thank the board for this additional time. I know you've got a lot on your plates, and I heard this morning that a lot of what you deal with deals with communities that are far less privileged than Menlo Oaks, or many of us in Menlo Oaks, not all of us, but many. So I get that, and I get that there has to be, has to be a lack of patience with how aggressively you must oppose this work. I've been involved opposing this work for a year, and I respect Ms. Stillman, and I respect her office, and I thank them all for their patience. But, but, in my 22 years as a Menlo Oaks homeowner, there has never been a bigger, more ill-conceived, or more unfair, or more frankly chaotic governmental threat to my neighborhood than the process and the outcome that you are being asked to endorse today, process and the outcome. Today, you have the opportunity to table this so that we have time and an opportunity to fix it. That's all we're asking for, is an opportunity to fix it. Let me skip right now, because I blow this down to one minute if I could, to two or three new things. In the slides that you have in front of you, at page 32, and the page numbers, I apologize, are very hard to read, but right there in the bottom right-hand corner, there's an addendum, and page 32 is a newly available to us county document. Now, Moda has had it for a long time. I just got it this weekend. That's why it's in the addendum. That's why I didn't bring it to you all before. In it, in this county document, which is all about green infrastructure, and green infrastructure is a major part of this proposal, it says that there- It says that there, if green infrastructure is attempted in Menlo Oaks, there would be damage to mature oak trees. And critically, green infrastructure would be redundant in Menlo Oaks because of our existing foliage and, and vegetation. So this is an example, just one, but a really important example at page 32 of our slides. It's a critical example of the kinds of information we did not get either from Moda or with deference from the Department of Public Works. And it's the kind of information we should have before we vote. The second new thing that I want to alert you to relates to slides 42 and 43 of the presentation you have. And there's a yellow tab at 42 and 43. Those are two draft ballots that we started circulating last week, including to Moda and DPW. The first one is our first shot as a collaborative effort to fix this process. We worked together as a group. We came up with this. It's a single page. It puts a lot of facts on one page, which previously were buried in lengthy Zoom calls or interminable FAQs on a website that some of us don't access. So that's a really important point. We, we put our minds to it. We came up with two pages that solves the problems. The second one, by the way, is even shorter and simpler because we saw, um, DPW's proposals for today. And we said, oh, we can make this simpler. Okay, I have run out of time for my cook's tour of the slides, but I'll do it as quickly as I possibly can. We've given you information here about our neighborhood at the beginning. That's the first section and their pictures. The second section, and that includes risks to our neighborhood that are looming on the horizon. The second section deals with Moda, which did take a leading role here. They did send out emails promoting this whole process all the way along. This morning, today, they refused to comment on the survey ballot we circulated because they said, oh, we're just a, a social club, a voluntary social club. Well, that's not how they acted. In addition to that, you've got a section of an analysis of flaws in the survey process to date, point by point. You've got an analysis of the misstatements to us by Moda, and I'm almost done. And you've got copies of the resolution and other materials, all in one package. Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it. I hope we can table this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Danforth. So through the president, you want to give five minutes to Moda now? And then we'll take, uh, other pub, public speakers and we'll give them a minute, correct? Okay, so Moda, you will have five minutes. I guess you can have representatives. Okay, so through the president, uh, we're going to give, um, one minute now for, I'm going to call on speakers. Right, so if you sent in your speakers, steps, I'll call on them. Okay. Well, you guys didn't want to speak, so that's right.
Mr. President, were you, were you suggesting that perhaps it would be appropriate if there is somebody who, uh, has a contrary position, maybe designate somebody to take five minutes then and, and, uh, speak on the other side of this? Is that? Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, so five minutes, come on up and state your name, please. Thank you.
I won't take five minutes because I didn't, I wasn't aware that we would have had five minutes to discuss this. I was planning for two or one minute. But my name is Greg Eckert. Our family has lived in Menlo Oaks since 2008. And we were active participants in this entire process. I want to thank the county for the work that they did on this project. Director Stillman pointed out how thorough it was. And I stand here telling you that there were multiple Zoom calls, over two hours each. People that you've heard from already in this meeting have sent out dozens and dozens of emails. I'm sure they've contacted each of you individually about this. So if there were questions that needed to be raised, I feel like there was more than ample opportunity for those to be answered. You know, the county published written responses to the frequently asked questions. I don't think any reasonable person would argue that this wasn't a transparent process. So, um, there's no debate that the drainage issues are real issues in our community, and they really do deserve to be fixed. Um, we have significant amounts of pooling. We've had trees fall in the neighborhood as a result of pooling. Um, we've had people who've actually been injured on our roads, walking their dogs. Uh, we actually had one person in the community who, who broke their hip, um, while walking on our road. So, um, I think it's, it's important that, uh, that they do get fixed. I think the county was very clear in the first presentation when they explained that it's actually the road bed that needs to be corrected. You can't simply gloss over the potholes when the road bed itself needs to be fixed. And fixing the potholes will do nothing for the drainage. And the drainage is still our key issue. So most importantly, I think the, the vote was compelling. You saw the percentages of our neighborhood that actually participated in the vote. Between 78% and 100% of our residents actually participated in that vote. You don't see that amount of participation almost anywhere else in, uh, in, in, in America right now. And it's, it's, it's fabulous. And you saw that the majority of the people, and I stand here, I'm speaking on behalf of the silent majority, honestly, who probably aren't here today, but they voted yes to improve those road standards. And we were able to get there despite the fact that any non-vote was actually counted as a no vote. So we had an incredibly conservative, um, vote count process as a result of that. And despite that, the, um, residents of Menlo Oaks voted in favor of changing these standards. So I think it's, it's important. I think that at the end of the day, it's the road beds that ultimately need to be fixed. And it's the actual drainage issue that needs to be taken care of. So just like your roof, you can't just keep putting shingles on it. At some point, you actually do need to replace the roof and you need to update the roof. And at that, and at this point in time, I feel like we're at the point where we do need new roads. So I think there's a clear consensus in our community that, uh, the roads should be fixed. I think that the county has run a very fair, um, process and a transparent process and has heard from all of the members of the community throughout this. And I humbly and sincerely ask you to move forward with the road improvement proj, project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. So, uh, Mr. President, we have 18 speakers, speaker steps. So if you haven't filled out a speaker's slip, please, um, there's one out there in the ante room. Uh, one minute per person. We'll start with Karen Barr, followed by Ted Spontises.
Hello, um, shall we wait for? Hello, I'm Karen Barr. I live on Ringwood Avenue, and I oppose the DPW's proposed resolution. I want to say that 1998 resolution is still in effect. It was not repealed in 2022. And that resolution applies to all streets in Menlo Oaks, including Ringwood and Coleman. And the DPW agreed that originally because we got a letter from them in June of 2023 saying that we would also have our, uh, property owners receive a road standard survey. Uh, the resolution says that no change can be made to the road standard without a property owner's survey. And by cutting Ringwood and Coleman out of that process, we are being deprived of our rights under the board resolution. And, uh, it is, uh, I ask that you please oppose this and ask that Ringwood and Coleman have a survey.
Thank you. Ted Spontises, followed by Mary Ann Carmack.
Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Ted Spontises, a longtime resident of Menlo Oaks. I'd like to respectfully, um, request that any decision regarding road standards be postponed today until a new impact study is conducted and all of Menlo Oaks is included in the process as my neighbor Karen just mentioned. Let me briefly elaborate. First of all, uh, we have not been provided sufficient information, frankly, to make truly informed decisions, um, in the absence of a detailed impact study. Things like impact on our mature oak trees, traffic and speeding impact considering, especially considering the new projects. And, uh, credible estimates, frankly, for water runoff on, on neighboring streets, uh, of the new project. Uh, in addition, as Karen said, Coleman and Ringwood residents have been explicitly excluded from this process. And, uh, the survey, uh, that we received was, did not include our residents. And furthermore, um, you're being asked today to validate in case there's standards while this study is still continued. You're being asked to approve, pre-approve something that has not been determined yet regarding that study. So there is no urgency to vote on this today. I urge you to take another look and really properly include the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, Mary Ann, sorry, Mary Ann Carmack, followed by Mark Lever.
My name is Mary Ann Carmack. Thank you for hearing our request to, um, pause this decision. My husband and I have lived in the Menlo Oaks district for many years. I for 33, my husband for 60. I wish to speak to the underappreciated effects of the proposed changes on traffic and how this has not been adequately addressed. Over the years, speeding and cut through traffic in our neighborhood have escalated. We have even had drag racing on our street as an after-school activity. The proposed changes, which will widen, straighten and smooth our roads, will serve to enable these behaviors and disrupt the peaceful, safe neighborhood that we so cherish. The survey was flawed. It did not address these factors, nor did it address the fact that within the next few years, hundreds of new housing units will be built right at the corner of our neighborhood. I understand that the DPW does not have jurisdiction over traffic and speeding, but a project of this scope should involve a coordinated impact study. For these reasons, the decision should be paused and full impact study, followed by an improved, fair and transparent survey can, should be developed. So please, let's get this right. Let's slow down. We will abide by results of a new improved survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Lever, followed by David Rubin.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mark Lever. I'm a longtime resident of the neighborhood. I'm also a substitute teacher at Menlo Atherton High School. Um, I'm asking the board to reject the adoption of the new road standards and/or table your vote, if that's something they're allowed to do, until we can revise and distribute the survey to the entire neighborhood. I know that's a point of contention, but apparently we have excluded 64 homes that are considered stakeholders in our neighborhood. And we haven't really thoroughly examined why were those 64 people excluded, being as our bylaws do include them. So again, I urge you to reject or not vote for the adoption. If you can't do that, please postpone your vote until we can examine this further. Thank you.
Thank you. David Rubin, followed by John Simonsen.
Hello, I'm David Rubin. I've lived on Ringwood Avenue, uh, in Menlo Oaks for more than 35 years. You're being asked to approve a resolution today that has written would pre-approve a sustainability department plan before it's complete and before final, uh, recommendations are known. As written, uh, the resolution is likely to be in conflict with the existing resolution 61884, which requires a survey of Menlo Oaks homeowners. And as you've heard, Ringwood homeowners haven't been included. A survey before road standards can be changed. If you do consider approving the proposed resolution, I urge you to look carefully at paragraph three and delete it or edit it so that you not pre-approve a yet unfinalized survey or a, a report from the sustainability department. And so there is time for Ringwood and Coleman residents to be surveyed as resolution 61.
Thank you. John Simonsen, followed by Suzanne Yonkers.
Good morning. My, my, my name's John Simonsen. I'm, uh, a retired lawyer. I practiced law in San Mateo County for 50 years. And I lived in Menlo, I've lived, my wife and I live in Menlo Oaks and have for 35 years and reared our four children there. And I voted no for any new, uh, road standards because I'm very concerned about the nature of the neighborhood. It's a fantastic place to walk, ride a bike. And I'm, I know if you put, if you put the gutters that are proposed in there, it's going to completely change it. And, uh, so I'm a, I'm a no vote. I'd like to have you table this, if you would, and let us get a, let us get another survey because there were some issues, I believe, that were not understood by everybody. Based on what I, information I've been able to gather, that about whether the roads would be improved if we voted no, uh, whether the trees would be affected. And, uh, whether, um, the, um, road is going to be widened, which is a big issue because the road in front of my place is fif, the asphalt is 15 feet wide. And, uh, this, the, the, the new proposal is 16 feet at least plus four feet. So, uh, and I, I have a picture, uh, a very big picture, which if I could approach the bench, so to speak, just quickly show it to you. I've wrote the road looks like.
Thank you, sir. Suzanne Yonkers. Thank you, followed by Ramona Murray.
Hi, uh, now happy good afternoon. Uh, my name is Suzanne Yonkers. I am a resident of the Menlo Oaks neighborhood. I live on Arlington Way, where I have been there, homeowner since 2012. I am a mother of three children who use our roads to bike to our public schools daily. Um, and I am here to kindly ask the board of supervisors to include my street, Arlington Way, in the list of roads to be improved. As it stands now, Arlington Way is one of the two roads that did not reach a majority. Um, we actually reached a 50/50 tie. This is per Wincie Ning at San Mateo County Public Works. Our street is in a deteriorating and unsafe condition. Um, there is one property on our street at 200 Arlington Way that was allowed to have two votes due to a legacy of two parcels on that. They do not have a second structure in this part of the process, and they should not have been allowed to have two votes. If they had not had two votes, our street would have a majority. So I kindly ask you to reconsider Arlington Way in your decision.
Thank you. Ramona Murray, followed by Beth Blitzerman.
Good afternoon. Thank you for, um, having this. My point of clarification is that we all live, all live in the Menlo Oaks district. And there is an association in which people, um, it's a social club. In the past, um, as a board member, um, we have had annual meetings, annual picnics and newsletters that go out to inform the public of what's going on and how they can engage with the community. Due to COVID, but also due to the fact that the board did not want to have more than one annual meeting, the Menlo Oaks District Association did not want to have more than one annual meeting because of COVID. We combined the picnic and the, and the, um, and the annual meeting together. And so my point is, is that no meeting about the road standards was held where we invited the public works department to come and speak and show people the map. Show people what is being impacted. That did not happen as it has for the last 55 years. If you look at your records, we have been in existence for more than 60 years, Menlo Oaks District Association, and we have always had community engagement in which the annexation.
You need to wrap, excuse me, you need to wrap up your way over.
Laffco comes and explains to us what annexation means. We had that prior to COVID. We did not have this for this process, and that is what this process needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Blackerman, followed by Lynn Grodsky.
Thank you for your time today. My name is Beth Blackerman. Uh, I have three kids and I've lived in Menlo Oaks for 25 years, and I'm a no vote. I was also, uh, agree with what Ramona said. I didn't see, there was no public meeting. I didn't know what was going on until the end of the process where it was just voting on a survey. And for the past, you know, 25 years, we were all brought in much earlier. So there really was no communication. Radical changes are being rushed along on a flawed process. Some of our streets were excluded from voting and discussion. All of us in Menlo Oaks are directly and indirectly affected by these proposals. One neighbor who lives on one of the excluded streets has a property that will be directly impacted. He's on a corner, but because his Ringwood street. but because his Ringwood Street address, he cannot even vote. That's not fair. The ballot was confusing and changes were made to the original proposal. Many neighbors I talked to were confused. That's not fair. I ask the Board of Directors to please table their vote.
Thank you. Ten speakers left. Lynn Grodsky, followed by Dorothy Fettiman.
Hi. I've lived on, on Coleman Avenue for forty-three years. I moved from forty acres on Skyline, where I didn't have telephone and electricity, after twelve years, to find a place that was country enough, but I could call a friend. I cannot understand the way my Moda organization has changed and been co-opted, as far as I'm concerned, with a highly manipulative agenda. I live on Coleman. I understand Coleman and Ringwood need to be dealt with differently because we have a different traffic pattern. I do not understand why I could not participate in a vote or a survey that was right around the corner from my house and would severely change the nature of my neighborhood. We're paving paradise to build freeways through our neighborhood that will increase the danger, spoil the environment. I feel passionate about this, and I was never given an option. I don't want a no improvement, but I want a valid improvement that honors the, the spirit and the nature of the community, which is precious in Menlo Park. We're about to have Sunset, build a massive amount of buildings, homes, buildings, businesses. They find an open road.
Ma'am, ma'am, you need to wrap up.
Yeah, I know. So an open road that's smooth, and they're just going to drive through it. I implore you to provide options that I can vote for.
Thank you.
There's no option that I can vote for. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Fettiman.
We've lived in Menlo Oaks for fifty years. What attracted us was the rural quality of our tree-lined streets. Until last year, the neighborhood had a feeling of everyone supporting each other. This proposal and the way the survey was conducted is tearing apart our neighborly atmosphere of Menlo Oaks. The survey was done in a confusing, misleading way and resulted in inaccurate, incomplete information. The survey as it stands will urge you to take steps that will radically degrade our neighborhood. We ask that you give us time to work out a better approach, working together to improve Menlo Oaks. Following the results of the survey, it will destroy the essential all qualities of our environmentally balanced collegial neighborhood. Say no to the new survey. Please give us long-loved Menlo Oaks time to collaborate and to present information to you for a survey that is fair.
Thank you. Steve Rasmussen, followed by John Horsley.
But I didn't start, the clock didn't already start. I would already be down to zero with my long walk up here. I've lived in, I first moved to San Mateo County when I was six years old, and I just had a fabulous time today watching what all of you do here. I've never been to a supervisor's meeting. My name, as you heard, is Steve Rasmussen. I am a member of Moda, a social club, and they have terrific hamburgers, and they serve hamburgers every summer. And that's about all I know about Moda until a year ago. I really would like to urge the supervisors to postpone the current resolution, and it would be my wish that there's some way that we can come forward with a new resolution that would very much include all of the neighbors of Menlo Oaks. Thanks very much.
Thank you. John Horsley, followed by Ad Gayara.
Yes, my name is John Horsley. I'm a homeowner on Ringwood Avenue and speak for myself and other neighbors in opposing the resolution. Ringwood Avenue, Coleman Avenue, and Bay Road constitutes almost a quarter of the, of the DP, of the housing units in this, in this space, and we were all categorically excluded from this process. Omitted from the DPW presentation this afternoon is the fact that the pending resolution, as drawn, would now add Ringwood and Coleman to the Menlo Oaks road standard and prioritization list based on a future plan to be developed in another process by another department under a separate, incomplete process from which the Coleman and Ringwood homeowners have also been excluded. I commend to your attention the written comments of Ringwood resident Karen Barr submitted yesterday with a petition regarding that.
Thank you. Ad Gayara, followed by John Smola.
Hi, I'm Ad Gayara, resident of Arlington Way since two thousand and seven. I'm here to, A, as a yes vote for the change, but B, more importantly to me, Arlington was a no, on a fifty-fifty vote. Okay? I would like to bring to your attention a few things. One, the pavement code index per the county is a thirty-two for Arlington. That puts us at a poor to very poor rating for the surface level. My oldest daughter uses crutches and is increasingly becoming dependent on a wheelchair. For her ability to move up and down the street is getting worse and worse, as the condition of the road gets worse and worse. Okay? It's unsafe for crutches. It's very difficult for the wheelchair. It will lead to shoulder injuries, which will render her at some point unable to move. Okay? This is a personal appeal. Okay? Additionally, apparently my time's up. I felt, you know, personally multiple injuries myself, running on the street, nothing significant, nothing severe, but please, I ask, urge you to consider a reevaluation of the Arlington mode, considering the safety standards. Thank you.
Thank you. John Smolo, followed by Victoria O'Hara.
Thank you, Supervisors. I'm John Smolo, forty-year resident, forty-two-year resident of Menlo Oaks. I'm a strong no. I think you saw one of the problems today. The alternative to the improvements is presented as as-is. That's a misstatement. The alternative should be continued maintenance. A lot of people are saying, we can't have it as-is. Menlo, Menlo Oaks Drive is in terrible condition. It's labeled wrong. Under the current maintenance, Berkeley Avenue, where I live on, was redone a couple of years ago. It's fabulous. I love it. If you did the same thing with Menlo Oaks, that would be fabulous, in my opinion. Also, cost-effective. This new plan is extremely expensive. What you did to Berkeley is not. I think you could use the funds elsewhere. And also, I would say, this process, including what you saw today with Moda, is incredibly contentious. This is the most contentious I've seen, the only contentious thing I've seen in Menlo Oaks in my forty-two years there. This is not consensus in any way. You saw it today, right here. Please let us form an actual consensus. Moda does not speak for us. We need to form consensus.
Thank you. Thank you. Victoria O'Hara, followed by Brent Brown.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I have lived in Menlo Oaks for almost a decade, and I agree with the recommendation to update the road standards. And I would ask you to please vote to approve the new standards. Our streets are a disaster, and we have voted on this, and we had this structure. I just want to touch a minute on the voting structure. And it was mentioned that if somebody didn't vote, that was counted as a vote against. If you don't look at those votes just for a second, of the votes that were returned, seventy to seventy-eight percent of the homeowners voted to approve the new standards. This is a vast majority, and I'm talking about the streets that approved it. This is a strange way that we had it set up. I don't think it was even democratic, but despite that, the vast majority of homeowners want this. It was a very clear process. All of these arguments you're hearing today were brought up already during the process. They were addressed very clearly. Despite that, everybody voted, not everybody, but the majority of our neighborhood wants these standards approved. So I would ask you please to approve this. And then we do still have a block-by-block voting again later, where we can have this whole discussion again, but at least we need to move forward to that stage. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Brent Brown, followed by Zoe Hyatt.
Thank you. I just wanted to take another minute to express my sincere appreciation to Ann Stillman and the entire DPW staff. They have been professional and transparent through this entire process. It was a very difficult process, but they communicated many, many times with everyone here in the face of unfounded criticisms and a lot of baseless accusations that you're hearing today. I'm a West Point graduate. I'm a decorated military veteran who fought in the war on terror. My life has been guided by a code of conduct instilled deeply in me through many, many years of selfless service. I returned from the war on terror to raise my family in Menlo Oaks. It's disheartening to see some members of our community intimidating and terrorizing their own neighbors with threats of litigation, simply for expressing their concerns about our roads. This behavior is ridiculous and disappointing. I do not consider recent actions in our community to be honorable or respectful anyway. Members of our community using their legal training and background to manipulate words for the purposes of demagoguery and fear, this is not our way of life. I hope that these actions cease immediately. I would like the board to appreciate that the support for the road improvements would likely be even higher than it is today if we had neighbors who were fearing retaliation decided to vote, and they did not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Zoe Hyatt, followed by Linda Jackson.
Hi, my name is Zoe Hyatt. I'm a member of the community in Menlo Oaks. I'm also a civil engineer with a master's degree in civil engineering specializing in sustainable design and construction. I've worked on several road construction projects across the country, including New Orleans. I must say that Menlo Oaks has some of the worst roads I've ever seen. I care deeply about the environment and our community, because first and foremost, I'm a mother of three young children, and their safety and security are my top priorities. My oldest son just turned five last week, Jack, and he just learned how to ride a bike. True story. This weekend, we took our first ride to his new school, Laurel and Mountry, which is about five, six blocks away. Unfortunately, he crashed due to the many potholes on Colby Avenue. Our crumbling infrastructure makes it unsafe to bike, walk, or drive on our roads. We need significant structural improvements, as your office has already indicated, through a thorough diligent and fair process. As climate change progresses, flooding will worsen and continue to deteriorate our roads. I could elaborate, but thank you for your diligence and for prioritizing this very, very important project and by moving forward with a yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Jackson. Okay. No additional speakers from chambers, so madam, please proceed.
Please click raise hand on Zoom for item number sixteen for road improvements in the Menlo Oaks area. We have one hand raised for the letter C, iPhone twelve. Please unmute and begin.
Hi, my name is Claudia Olshig. I live at six oh one Menlo Oaks Drive, and I voted yes on the road improvements. I have a daughter, teenage daughter, who loves to skateboard. And unfortunately, we also recently tried to do it again, but she's only able to do it at certain sections on the roads, and it's a big safety concern. And during the rain, it's, you can't even, we have a small dog, and we can't even walk our dog during the rain. So I strongly encourage the road improvements to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. President, no further hands. Back to you.
All right. Thank you. I turn to my colleagues for comments or questions. Anything?
A question about Ringwood and Coleman. Maybe Ms. Stillman could address. Those were excluded from the voting. Can you, can you review why that was the case?
Yes. Ringwood Avenue and Coleman Avenue are part of another study that the Sustainability Department is managing to take, to look specifically at those roads. They're part of the active transportation plan. They're different in character from many of the other roads in Menlo Oaks, because they're more major sort of thoroughfares. I mean, Ringwood is a connection between Millfield Road and Bay Road. It's got Menlo Atherton High School. It's got Laurel School. And Coleman is a connection between kind of Willow and also Ringwood. And part of that is in the city of Menlo Park, and part of it is County and Incorporated. So Sustainability Department is really focusing on those two roads, understanding where they are, the needs of the public, the desires of the property owners, and really how to shape those roads to serve the public and the property owners as best as possible. We believe, I mean, this, what would come out of that study in terms of proposed improvements for a roadway section could conceivably be very different than what we're talking about for the other seven roads in Menlo Oaks. So they're really part of a separate project. It wasn't our intent. I've, some of the comments I heard was, the intent was to sort of to fold it in. I think our intent was that we're, you know, we looked at the seven roads, excluded those two. Those two are on a, in, you know, have a specialized study, specialized effort with outreach, engagement. And what would come of that would be presented to your board for consideration. And if improvements are, in terms of a cross-section of the roadway or whatnot was approved by the board, then eventually that would be implemented, but would be sort of embodied in, when we look at all the roadways and the roadway standards for Menlo Oaks.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Mueller.
Thank you. So at the outset, I don't think we have, will reach consensus on this item in the community. I, I do want to say to Public Works, thank you. There is nothing as contentious as doing work in front of someone's home. It's a very difficult process. There is always going to be disagreement, and more often than not, as you know, people will not agree with the end result. So thank you for continuing to put you and your team in that position to try to figure out what's best from a safety standpoint. At the outset, one of the things that, and I also want to say to folks, I appreciate surveys in the democratic process. As a, as a supervisor up here, those surveys are helpful to give us public sentiment, but we have a duty, not only to those who live in the neighborhood, but to those outside the neighborhood, of whether or not we're being good stewards for the county, for those who might travel through that neighborhood from outside of it, and also for those who may be impacted by the spending of, of resources throughout the county. There's a limited amount, and certainly having to do, having to spend resources in an area over and over again, when that can, money can be used to going to help other people in an adverse way also can impact this decision. The information that I'm really interested in gathering, and I think frankly, what I'd like to ask, if, and I defer to President Slocum, as this is his district, but one of the things I'd be really interested to do is I'd like to have a closed-session item to discuss the liability impacts of the decision we make today. As I look at what's happening here with respect to Public Works, it occurs to me that there may be a safety issue that's being addressed in the engineering design with respect to the pooling of water and the placement of trees. And so I'd like to refer to have some sort of discussion in closed session with respect to design alternatives here with transportation engineers present. I think that's appropriate and prudent before we make a determination of what happens. Separately from that, what I'd say to, to my colleagues is, while I Separately from that, what I'd say to my colleagues is, while I appreciate that there was a survey that's done there, when the survey was put together, can I ask Ms. Stillman, was the survey brought to the board to look at prior to it going out?
No.
Okay. And has there been, after that, as when that survey went out, where did the input come into that, what would be included in it? What did you meet with, did anyone meet with the supervisor or with anyone prior to getting that sentiment put in place?
We did not meet with the supervisor or supervisors or a supervisor to talk about the specific options that were going to be presented. The options that were also presented were minimum road standards, things that could be paid for by road fund or road fund eligible, which would include the roadway surface and roadway drainage.
And I appreciate that. And I think the survey that you did actually was, to be very clear with the public, I think the survey that you did actually was very important to go ahead and test public sentiment as you continued to sort of move forward and shape this. The question in my mind is not whether that that survey was appropriate or not, but the question is whether or not it's controlling. And now that the project has actually sort of taken shape and there are defined alternatives, also within that period of the board making the decision to sit down and with the supervisor for that district and to say, well, let's go ahead and clearly define for the public what it is they are choosing from. And again, I want to be very clear with those present. I don't see that even the survey in that circumstance being completely dispositive. It may come back that when our closed-session items that we turn and we say, well, the community now doesn't want to move forward, but from a liability standpoint, we are going to. And that's something I think people need to understand. What I see potentially happening here, that I have some concerns about, is I see a crown of a road that is not to standard. I see water pooling, and I see trees in the vicinity of that. And so, and frankly, people walking in that road. And with the, and I do have concerns about the impact of climate change having an effect here where people may be put at risk. So I share what those concerns are to have, but I do not want to have the discussion with county council what the impact of that is in open session. I don't think that's appropriate. I want to figure that out for the safety of everyone involved. I understand that I think most people could keep things the way they are in a perfect world and have it be perfectly safe as well, that they'd want that. And I think that that's, and so obviously, people, everyone wants to have as many trees as possible on their street, and they don't want things to change. The question, the other question then frankly that I have for those who would say they don't want it to change, is that I also have concerns about the continuing process of spending resources to repair that road over and over again. So I want to have that discussion in terms of what that looks like over time. It's really important as we are looking at an area, if the crown of the road can't be done in a way to allow water to come off and in a way that drains properly, and we have to go and repair that repeatedly in a way that we don't do other roads in the county, the question is, are we spending extra resources for this one neighborhood in a way that's unfair? And that's something we really need to sit down and talk with our engineering staff around. So I have all of those unanswered issues, but I think that the path forward that I would be looking for is to go ahead and sit down and have that closed session on this, and then for a crafting of a second survey to be done, not because there was a problem with the first one, but because we are at a new point in time where we need to have things clearly defined, and then take all of that information back and make a final decision. And that would be, but I defer, obviously Supervisor Slocum to you, this is your district. And I say to residents, you know, I said this when I've met with residents in the past on the issue, be kind to Public Works. Be kind to them. They are not in the interest of trying to make people unhappy. They really are just trying to protect the community. And I know how difficult this is. I always say when people have these issues come up, it's nothing like, the only thing that could be more personal is talking about your children's school, honestly, when you're talking about something in front of your home. To the extent you can, just remember that when anything threatens our home, our fight or flight turns on. And sometimes we're not always thinking in terms of the compassion we can show each other, and you might get further with the compassion, so please be kind to each other to the extent you can. But we'll work through this and see if we can figure out something that's, something that makes sense from the county's perspective and your perspective. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Corzo.
I'd prefer to speak a little later, if that's okay.
I don't think there's any other speakers up here.
No?
I don't. I guess so.
Okay, okay. I want to thank everyone for being here. I do recognize that this is an impactful decision that we are making here as a board today. And I do want to also thank staff for all of the time that they've put into navigating this community engagement process and recognize that it must have been really difficult to try to, to try to just, you know, meet everyone's needs. And honestly, doing the surveying kind of block-by-block is really interesting. I think about, you know, where I grew up in north-central San Mateo and how there were, you know, over two hundred parking spots eliminated in one decision by the city council without anything close to a process like this. And it kind of, and that really weighs on me because it's, I think, a good example of government's responsibility in really being thoughtful about being equitable with our time, with our resources. And as someone who always does my, like, I always do my best to really hear different people's perspectives, I understand many of the concerns about the process. And really, at the core of it, I think, is wanting to preserve a beautiful canopy of trees that, you know, without a doubt is beautiful. But I do just, I think what's coming up for me mostly is that I think this process, no process is perfect, but there was a really thoughtful process. Staff has already put a lot of time into it, and there will be another vote. And so I don't think that I agree with my colleague here in terms of, there already will be another vote, so I feel like I'm ready to make a decision today and really respect everyone's time because I don't think it's prudent to kick the can down the road and then kind of start from zero. And I also believe that if there were truly concerns around litigation, that would have already been flagged to us by our county council. And so, you know, I did hear, one thing that kind of rose up for me is like, if there, you know, the trees are beautiful, and I know some of them would be eliminated, like, can we plant more trees? I think that's something maybe we can, we can consider, or maybe not trees, but can we, can we bring some more nature back if we're taking trees out? And then I did hear a concern about two parcels on Arlington getting two votes. And I also heard someone share that they have a daughter, I believe, who is in a wheelchair. And as someone who worked many years with folks with disabilities, I think that is worth looking at again. And just also from, from an equity standpoint, I think that's worthy of reviewing. So I'm ready to vote today, and I think it's clear kind of how, where I will land, and I hope folks understand how I got to that place. And, you know, as you, many of you have noted in your comments, as a board, we, it's really incumbent upon us to focus on being the safety net for this entire county, and we take that work very seriously. And so, you know, we also have to be, we have to navigate decisions and invest our public dollars wisely. And sometimes it's, you know, you can't find a win-win. But I do believe that, like, as a community in Menlo Oaks, you all will be able to kind of get through this, and I hope that any divisions that have been created can be mended. So those are my comments. President Slocum, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney.
Mr. President.
Could you clarify the process if we were to take Supervisor Mueller's closed-session idea? What, is that today? Is that next week? Could you just talk about that for a moment?
Yes, Mr. President. Well, certainly, we could not do it today because it hasn't been agendized for discussion in closed session. The other thing that I've been kind of racking my brain here on is, you know, what the basis would be to discuss this in closed session. I mean, you know, certainly there's a litigation exception under the Brown Act. It's for pending or threatened litigation or however, and we're not actually in a place where I'm comfortable that we could sort of even have a conversation in closed session on the sort of the general subject that we're talking about today. That said, you know, I haven't given it extraordinarily deep thought. This is an area of the law that I know pretty well, though, so I'm pretty confident that I've, that I've got that right, although we could certainly take some time to look at it. And that isn't to say that we couldn't find other ways to get information responsive to the supervisor's request to the board. I just don't think that closed session is necessarily the way we would do it. We would have to do it perhaps by attorney, work product, correspondence to members of the board, a member's memo, for example. So we could certainly do the research that we're being asked to do. We just couldn't do it in closed session to my ninety-plus percent certainty.
That makes sense. Yeah, it makes sense because you don't want to have a quorum of us discussing it, but I still would like to see the work product.
Yeah, okay.
One other thought, Supervisor, I'm sorry, one thought occurred to me, I'm sorry. And that was, you know, oftentimes your board, when you feel like you want to have further conversation about something, you appoint a subcommittee to look at the matter, and we can certainly have, you know, sort of an in-depth conversation with two supervisors at a time when they're members of a subcommittee.
That's interesting. So do we need a motion on that, or can I just appoint Supervisor Mueller and myself?
You could, you could make a motion to appoint the two of you to a subcommittee.
A subcommittee to do that. Would that, would that work for you? Yeah, okay. So let me just take care of that right now, or I'll forget. But I'd like to make a motion to have the board approve the idea of a subcommittee, ad hoc subcommittee, to further work on the Menlo Oaks road standard project, and those members would be Supervisor Mueller and myself. That's a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Paine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
No.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Kanapa? And Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we have a subcommittee, right, or an ad hoc committee now? Good, okay.
Motion passes with Supervisor Corzo casting in a vote.
That's right. I just want everybody to know that my staff and I, along with the Director of Public Works, along with the Director of Sustainability, along with the county attorney, and a couple of staff people, spent a couple of hours the other day driving every road, basically, that we're talking about here. And we got a chance during that tour to ask the directors, well, primarily the Director of Public Works, questions. And I clearly saw, it's just a beautiful neighborhood, tree-lined streets, kind of old country lane roads, and it's really an impressively beautiful area. Now then, I did see some trees that were, depending on the road, what do you call it, expansion or widening?
Right, yeah.
That there are basically, it looks like there's some trees right in the frickin', excuse me. Strike that. Right in the roadway, basically. And so I'm really concerned about the trees, as I know my colleagues are, and the canopy and all that. But the roads were, I sympathize with the little girl in the wheelchair and the crutches and the skateboards and the bikes and the little accidents because the roads that we were on mostly were pretty, pretty rough, I guess, with tree roots underneath and just through time buckling and whatnot, I guess, right?
And patching that's happened for the years. And the roads were never built with structural sections, so it's just been kind of over the years. That's actually why we're talking about potentially road improvements.
Yeah.
Is there county right-of-way that people have built into in these areas? There is?
I mean, the road right-of-ways, and that's part of, in the presentations, and I just shared with you the photos for Colby, what we've demonstrated on all of those for each street is what the road right-of-way is. And going off of memory, I feel like the road right-of-way varies from forty feet to seventy feet. And definitely, there are encroachments in the road right-of-way, and also with the trees. I mean, it's not our intent to remove any trees. That's not what we would want to do. We have to work in a very thoughtful and careful manner to not disturb or damage any of the trees. It involves working with arborists. It involves really working around the trees, and that's part of what the roadways are doing right now. You can see them naturally working around trees. On other projects where we've worked in close proximity to trees, there's handwork that's recommended by the arborist. So instead of the equipment doing work, so those are, that's all part of the way, what we've explained to people about what our process would have to look like going forward and what we would anticipate because it's, it's our intent to work with, but there are other encroachments in the right-of-ways as well. And some may be permitted through encroachment permits, some may not be, but.
When we do sit down, I'd like to see how the road can move to keep those trees in place but still meet standards.
That's right.
So, and people, for those who are against this project, I would suggest to you, it may be smart to come by now with those offered compromise, to be giving up encroachment into right-of-way that the county could otherwise take, but to smooth the process, which we've seen have, which frankly, we've seen in nearby jurisdictions do.
Right, and just one more thing I want to mention, too, is, you know, emergency response vehicles. I mean, that's something, too, because, you know, we have worked with and consulted with Menlo Park Fire Protection District in terms of what sort of wits they would, they really want and require because that's important to them as well, and that's part of the decision-making process when we were identifying options.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So in terms of the bottom line kind of here for the residents, at some point in the future, they will have an opportunity to respond to new surveys and to meetings as you had in the past, et cetera, et cetera. Is that my, that's my understanding? Is that right? They'll have that opportunity?
Well, I think through the work of the subcommittee, that will be part of what we would talk about, would be a lot of the details that, you know, of this area and the roads and the different items and issues. And then I would assume that we would talk through also what the future looks like in terms of a survey.
So I can't get a yes or a no out of you?
Well, I'm sort of assume, I'm sort, I mean, that's what I'm.
There will be a chance, a new, another chance for residents to weigh in at some point in the future, and that's my understanding. Could you just say yes or no?
Yes, I believe that will be the direction, and it will be very objective in terms of facts and information.
Okay, very good.
Mr. President, were you, I think one of the things that you were referring to is that if road standards were adopted, that what was contemplated was there would be a block-by-block surveying as well.
That's what I understand.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about something else. Okay, yes, that is exactly what I was explaining. If the road standards were adopted, then the first road on the priority list, all the property owners would receive a survey where they would have an opportunity to vote for whether they want improvements or not. And if they want improvements, which of the four that are offered, would they be in favor of? And we would evaluate that information, the results, on a block-by-block basis.
Yes. And you might even have additional meetings via Zoom or in person, as you did last time.
Yes, whenever we do, when we approach a road with road standards on the priority list, we will have a meeting with the property owners. We invite them all before we ask them to fill out the survey so they have an opportunity to understand it, to see it. We usually put things out in the field, on the ground, so that people can go outside and understand where the improvements are. And then the survey explains those marks as well, so you can really go outside and understand what does it look like in front of your house.
I appreciate it. I'm prepared to make a, I'm, excuse me, I'm prepared to make a motion here now, and I would move that we adopt minimum road standards for future road improvements in the Menlo Park area and be a priority list to be used to determine the priority of future road improvements in the Menlo Oaks area.
I need to ask a question, in kind of council. I didn't want to do this in open session, but I need to, but if without any other opportunity to do so, is it problematic if we adopt road standards as minimum road standards and then give the public the opportunity to decide whether or not they want to implement them should an accident occur later and those minimum road standards are not implemented due to some vote?
Well, I think that the, even, even with respect to sort of that block-by-block process that we're talking about in the future, those matters would nevertheless come back to you, to the board, as a matter of board discretion, so I'm not seeing.
But that's my, that's the problem that I'm trying to get to.
Sure.
Kind of turning to, is if we adopt minimum road standards, but then somehow create a process whereby we are deferring to the public whether or not we actually implement them, and an accident occurs later, could it not be said that the county has, has been derelict in its responsibility to follow its own road standards by allowing some sort of other process to override them?
Well, I think it would be, again, it would be the board exercising jurisdiction, I'm sorry, discretion down the road, so to speak, to determine whether or not, even if, you know, even in the face of community input, whether or not to implement those standards, I think that as long as the board is exercising ultimately discretion with respect to whether or not to do what comes to the, you were noting earlier that this is an advisory process, and ultimately, the board retains pursuant to its police power the ultimate decision whether or not to do any particular thing. So, I, I'm not in the, in the totality of it, seeing that there's a legal risk per se, as long as the board is exercising discretion when the time comes to decide whether or not to actually move forward with the project based on whatever standards are in front of you.
I understand that we have discretion on the secondary part, but if, what that time of discretion, imagine that one of the streets says ninety-five percent of the people don't move forward, and the board looks at that and says, okay, based on that ninety-five percent, we're exercising a discretion, we're not going to move forward, and then an accident later occurs on that street, are we setting up the county for liability based on the exercise of that discretion which was put in place as a result of that vote?
Well, I don't think you're putting the county in any more of an issue than the issue it's currently in, which is that the stand, because you wouldn't be talking about any change in standards at that point, as I see it, so I don't think it increases the rest of the county.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get everything you needed?
I think so, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so, there was a motion, right? Is there a second?
Yep, we need a second.
Can, I'm sorry, can you please restate them? I just want to make sure I understand what I'm voting on.
The motion is to approve the item as is, A and B.
Oh, second.
All right, I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa? And President Salkum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I think we should move into our closed session now and have lunch while we do closed session, and then come back, and how many, how long do we need for all that?
Supervisor Salkum, I think that maybe forty-five minutes, does that sound reasonable? And I would ask for a motion to change the order of the agenda, or to revise the order of the agenda so that closed session moves to this point.
I motion to revise the agenda to move closed session after item, what item was that?
Sixteen, I think.
Sixteen.
Yeah, second.
All those in a favor?
Aye. And so, we'll reconvene at a quarter after, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
The time is now one twenty-eight PM, and the board is in the process. Thank you.
Good job.
I thought you were going to vote.
All right, President Salkum, the time is now two twenty PM. We're back in open session. All the supervisors are present. Through the President, Mr. Niblin, you have anything to report out?
Nothing to report out, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Clerk. I think we are on item seventeen, is that, did I get that right? Okay, so, item seventeen is to adopt a resolution authorizing an amendment to the Master Salary Resolution zero seven nine eight one two to adjust the salary of two classifications to provide a livable wage rate for regular and limited-term county employees. Mr. Calagie, are you?
I appreciate this. I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Canepa and Supervisor Corzo, who are the sponsors of this action.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, County Executive Calagie. What this particular item does is it really sets the county apart in terms of what we compensate. Obviously, as you know, a livable wage in San Mateo County is really a far distant, far distant reality for a lot of people. What this resolution does is it really ensures that we're able to create a rate, a rate of about thirty dollars an hour, just to give people the opportunity to have a living wage here in San Mateo County. As you can imagine, it's so, so hard, and there have been many stories about people being able not to pay the bills, and what the county is doing is putting the employees first by moving forward with this livable wage. So, I want to thank Supervisor Corzo for her leadership in this role, and kick it off to her, pass it off to her.
Thank you, Supervisor Canepa. I want to thank County Executive Mike Calagie for collaborating on this and truly, I believe, leading it. I think, you know, one of the things I mentioned earlier today was that you find those opportunities to move forward the values of this board, and I think this is one that Supervisor Canepa and I are lucky to, to be a part of and to lead. I think this item is really about valuing every single county employee. As the daughter of a house cleaner and nanny and, you know, folks that were truly working class, this item, I think, really sets that foundation for making sure that in San Mateo County, we are valuing every single worker, and it's really an honor to be able to vote on this and be a part of it. I think that this is a win for all of our employees in the long run, and our county, you know, is in a position to be able to do this, and really happy to be a part of it. Thank you.
Questions from board members? Any questions on this matter? Okay, public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand to comment for item seventeen, an amendment to provide a livable wage rate. No hands raised, Mr. President. Back to you.
Thank you. So, you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution authorizing amendment to the Master Salary Resolution zero seven nine eight one two to adjust the salary of two classifications, provide a livable wage rate for regular and limited-term county employees.
Second.
Roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
And President Salkum?
Yes. Thank you. Item eighteen is a Measure K, adopt a resolution authorizing a one-time grant of district discretionary Measure K funds not to exceed ten thousand dollars to the Peninsula Family YMCA for the senior gentle aerobics class at the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Community Center, and authorizing the county executive for his designee to execute the grant agreement. Supervisor Corzo?
Oh, that's me. Sorry, one second here. Okay, I'm really excited to sponsor this Measure K grant. This is a collaboration between the Peninsula YMCA and the city of San Mateo for a gentle aerobics class at the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Community Center. This is an investment in my district for the senior community, a very diverse group of seniors at the King Center that, you know, go to be in community exercise, and, you know, at a time where it's clear that we need to continue to further invest in historically marginalized communities, this is a big win for seniors in that part of my district, although it is open to everyone. So, yeah, I also want to take a second to highlight Ms. Gloria Brown, who couldn't stay for the entire meeting, but was here for a big chunk of it. It truly is her leadership that elevated this to my attention, and, you know, some of you may know that she's done a lot of amazing work in the community, and so it's an honor to be able to partner with her on this. So, with that, I respectfully move to approve item eighteen.
Second.
Public comment?
Sure. We did have a speaker, as Supervisor Corzo said, I think she's left already, Gloria Brown. She's not here. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, can you please ask for comments on Zoom?
Sure, please click raise hand for item number eighteen. This is for Peninsula Family YMCA. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Motion on the floor, I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item nineteen is a Measure K also. It's a recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing improving a pilot reward program and authorizing the county executive or his designee to implement the reward program, including paying qualifying rewards as necessary and advisable within the discretion of the county executive in coordination with the district attorney and the sheriff. And the second part is authorize an appropriation transfer of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from non-departmental services to the county executive's office to establish the pilot reward program for information on residential burglary, burglary crimes in San Mateo County Supervisory District Number Three administered in coordination with the DA and the sheriff. Supervisor Mueller?
Thank you, President Salkum. Also, since January this year, there have been over ninety residential burglaries in unincorporated county in, in my district in recent months to combat residential burglaries which have been happening in Atherton and Woodside and throughout District Three, including Menlo Park, Potola Valley, the coast. Local jurisdictions have added license plate readers, they've increased police controls, police patrols, they've held community forms to reinforce neighborhood watch programs, they've worked to register private residential cameras so that footage can aid in criminal investigations, and they've utilized new tactics such as in Atherton employing bait houses to catch those in the act of the crime. When a criminal commits a residential burglary, they violate a resident's sense of security and safety, shattering the feeling of safety that a home is meant to provide. The financial burden of replacing stolen items from a residential burglary can cause stress and hardship, impacting the victim's economic stability. The harm from taking the material's possession in a residential burglary sends far beyond the physical loss of the items. Possessions often hold significant sentimental value, representing cherished memories and personal milestones. Their loss can create a profound sense of grief, grief and irreplaceable void. Beyond the loss of material possessions, the criminal actor erodes the trust and peace of mind that residents hold in their community. The intrusion leaves emotional scars, making individuals feel vulnerable and unsettled. Indeed, I asked members of the community who have been recent victims to come and speak, and they were too afraid to do so. Every time a residential, there is a residential burglary, there is an inherent risk of a dangerous physical interaction between criminal and resident, which is why, in collaboration with San Mateo County Sheriff Christina Cormus, San Mateo County District Attorney Steve Wagstaff, and the county executive office, I'm asking the board of supervisors to set aside one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars funding for a pilot program, the offer award to those who come forward with information leading to arrest and conviction of residential burglars. Sheriff Corpus is here, and I'd like to go ahead and invite her up to make some comments. At the same time, while she's walking up, I want to plug that there will be a fireworks buyback program happening in my district in Hafnum Bay this Saturday. Sheriff Corpus.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board, President Salkum, CEO Calagie, County Attorney John Niblin, members of the public, thank you for having me today. When residential burglaries occur, they profoundly impact our communities because our home is our safe haven, where we create lasting memories with our family and friends. When criminals invade our homes and steal personal belongings, it can be deeply traumatizing. As your sheriff, my priority is and focus is on making San Mateo County a safer community for everyone. This program, made possible by the vision and support of Supervisor Mueller and in collaboration with the district attorney's office, is proof of our commitment. Residential burglaries present unique challenges, but we believe in thinking outside the box to tackle these crimes effectively. Information from witnesses and nearby residents is crucial to our investigation and identifying those responsible. Our community members and stakeholders are our eyes and ears. When someone appears suspicious or out of the norm, it is important that we take note and act. At the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, we encourage you to notice and report all suspicious activity. The Residential Burglary Reward Pilot Program is a groundbreaking initiative designed to incentivize people to come forward and share vital information. By leveraging community intelligence, we can enhance our efforts to solve these crimes and prevent future occurrences. I applaud Supervisor Mueller for making this innovative program possible for San Mateo County District Three. Our District Three communities of Hafnum Bay, San Carlos, Potola Valley, Woodside, and unincorporated San Mateo County will be safer thanks to this initiative. I want to acknowledge and extend my appreciation to the DA's office for working collaboratively to enhance community safety. By adopting the initiative and stakeholder-focused strategies, we can create a multifaceted approach to reduce residential burglaries and foster a safer, more resilient community. Thank you for your commitment and collaboration in making San Mateo County a safer place for all. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Sheriff Corpus. And the last thing I'd add is that the police chiefs from all of the jurisdictions in my district that have their own police organizations are also in support of this initiative. Thank you.
I have a question for, for Mr. Mueller. In regards to the reward, can you talk about that a little bit more? Who makes the determination? And then, and what, is it done in the beginning part? I mean, I'm just curious to how you identify who receives the award or reward?
Yeah, so what we've, the plan that we've put together with the sheriff's department and with the district attorney's office and the county executive's office is that there's a three-way committee of individuals, not the supervisor's office, because it would be inappropriate for me to be involved in that. But basically, at the time of the burglary is committed, the jurisdiction, whether it be the sheriff or those, or the police, the investigative service brings that burglary, that crime to the committee. The committee sets forth the reward, up to ten thousand dollars, promotes that award within the district, and then, based on information that comes into, leading to arrest or conviction, that same committee looks at what that information was and what impact it had on the investigation, and then makes a determination how to go ahead and do that award. This is the same framework that is used in Los Angeles County, but not for residential burglaries. They use it, it's actually, it's actually used for a different purpose, but we, and looking for a framework, that was the one that we were able to, to look at and build upon.
No, I'm in, I'm in total support. You know, I think you addressed my concern. My concern was the issue of potential conflict.
Yeah.
So, so you're, that's, that's.
I'm removed from it. I saw that right away.
Thank you. I'm in support.
All right, public comment? Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand to comment for item number nineteen, District Three Measure K item, for a pilot reward program for information on residential burglary crimes. We have one hand raised, Carlisle Anne Young. Please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Sherri. I didn't really hear if this was going to also cover stolen cars, but I did read recently that they, there was a Prius stolen out of Montero, which is over on the unincorporated San Mateo County coast, and it was recovered in Pacifico, hopefully due to the license plate reader program, but I'm not sure. And then, secondly, just yesterday, I believe, I saw an article on Nextdoor, and I haven't confirmed it anywhere else, but they said they broke up a house party where some individuals from Santa Ana. where, um, some individuals from Santa Ana, Southern California, were found. Um, you know, the party was loud, and when the sheriffs responded, they, um, caught these two felons that had locks, gun, you know, illegal weapons on them. So, I'm, I'm happy and support anything the sheriff's department can do. We don't just have house burglary, because we have a lot of different kinds of law enforcement issues. But thank you for everything you're doing. And if you can clarify, if it has to do with cars and catalytic converters and stuff too, that'd be nice to know. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and I'll follow up with you after the meeting, Sid. But I'll go ahead and move the item forward.
Second.
Sure, I'll take the roll call, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
President Stolcom?
Discretionary Measure K funds not to exceed twelve thousand one hundred dollars to the Friends of the San Carlos Adult Community Center for an active aging pilot program and authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute the grant agreement. Supervisor Mueller?
Thank you, President Stolcom. The San Carlos Adult Community Center serves an average of two hundred and forty older adults daily with hot meals, social events, physical fitness, and a variety of educational and engaging activities to prevent isolation and promote healthy aging. As we tackle mental health issues across the county and age groups proactively support, supporting programs that bolster the health, happiness, community of our seniors, this must also be a priority for local governments. It's why I'm recommending the board adopt a resolution authorizing a one-time grant of district discretionary discretionary Measure K funds not to exceed twelve thousand one hundred dollars to the Friends of the San Carlos Adult Community Center to pilot an active aging program in partnership with the city of San Carlos. This free-for-month series will empower participating adults over fifty, over the age of fifty-five through a range of wellness, leadership, and civic engagement topics, activities, and field trips that promote physical, mental, and social wellness in giving back to the community. I'd like to acknowledge Patricia Bound, President of the Friends of the San Carlos Adult Community Center, who is here to speak today. And I go ahead and invite her to make her comments. Thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon to all of the supervisors. Thank you Supervisor Mueller for partnering with us on this important, as we see it, venture. The pres, I'm president of the San Carlos, Friends of the San Carlos Adult Community Center, and we specialize, so to speak, in, um, older adult activities. That is the main focus of our, um, organization. So with that as our main goal, we're always looking for new ways to, uh, enhance the lives of our senior, uh, participants. Normally, we have physical types of things like exercise and things like that, but we wanted to expand it to cover the whole, uh, of someone's well-being. And after the pandemic, it was evident that a lot of the seniors weren't even coming back to senior centers. It took them a while to get into that. But now, we seem to have more focus. They do come in, but we're looking for like going that next step to enrich their whole life, which, as Ray said, would cover mind, body, and spirit. So we're very excited about establishing this pilot program that will allow us to bring in things such as speakers, take field trips, and luncheons. So with that in mind, I want to thank you for partnering with us and for the city of San Carlos for partnering with us in this endeavor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, members?
Sorry.
Okay. Public comment?
Sure, no speaker, um, no speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
On Zoom, please click raise hand for item twenty, District Three Measure K item, to the Friends of San Carlos Adult Community Center. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Very good. A roll call, or we need a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Thank you. I'll take the roll call, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa and President Stolcom?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Item twenty-one is another Measure K request. Adopt a resolution authorizing a one-time grant of district discretionary Measure K funds not to exceed ten thousand dollars to Filoli Center to support the, its youth programs during academic year twenty-four, twenty-five, and authorizing the county executive or his designate to, um, approve those grants. Supervisor Mueller?
Thank you Supervisor Stolcom. Filoli, so actually this, I was able to visit Filoli last week to celebrate my son's graduation from high school with family. It is the oldest farm in San Mateo County and is truly a treasure to behold. The gardens there are a place that frankly, when I was practicing law, I used to bring my terminal patients to, to find a sense of peace. And there, when I was interacting with them, and it always granted it. I, uh, and when you visit it, you realize though that it's very isolated. It's hard to get to. Not everyone has access to it, and it frankly can be expensive to try to travel to visit. And so for that reason, uh, I firmly believe that low-income students from low-income families should have the same opportunity to visit and access, access, uh, this gem in San Mateo County that, that those with, who have more are lucky enough to experience, which is why I'm asking the board of supervisors to adopt a resolution authorizing a one-time grant of district discretionary Measure K funds not to exceed ten thousand dollars to Filoli to support its youth programs during the academic twenty-four, twenty-five year. This is not just a grant for a field trip. They will be provided with nature education that includes gardening, nutrition, physical activities tied to science and liter, and literary curriculum. Press every youth participates will receive an annual membership for their entire family so that they can share that love and that experience with them. I'd like to introduce Filoli's Chief Development Officer, Chris Horano, to share a few comments about the program and show a brief video about it. Mr. Horano?
Thank you Supervisor Mueller, um, members of the board of supervisors, President Stolcom. Just as a little bit of background, as Supervisor Mueller shared the importance of this really exciting program. In two thousand and eighteen, Filoli received a grant to really, um, identify gaps in outdoor education programs, especially in nature. And, uh, what the findings showed was that, uh, most of the outdoor programs that you're familiar with likely are focused on K through eight. Preschools and teens are often overlooked. And so Filoli's entered into a strategic plan where we did want to outreach in communities of need specifically with organizations who serve preschools and teens. The pandemic hit, as everybody remembers, we were able to actually finally pilot our first two preschools, including Peninsula Family Services in two thousand and twenty-one. And it was a tremendous success and with amazing support from donors and funders like yourselves. Last year, we were able to grow the program to sixteen preschools and two groups, uh, two teen groups from Title One programs. We served last year over six hundred students, and Supervisor Mueller had referred to, uh, that extends to their family memberships, so they can come any time of the year. And for those of you who are familiar with our history, we, we no longer have a docent program, but we like to think that all those preschoolers that come back with their families, they're the docents. They're the ones that can, can provide experiences. It is more than just a field trip. They come three times a year, a school year. Most of the funding that actually, because transportation continues to be our greatest obstacle, goes to funding charter buses. And funding from this resolution will help support that, um, that very needy expense. I wanted to also add that if you haven't had a chance to visit, Filoli's gone an incredible evolution, and we like to think that we are, we don't ever want to be the best kept secret in the county. We've innovated with really programs that quite frankly, have been really aligned with a lot of what you're discussing today. When that pandemic, uh, hit and really impacted many nonprofits who were stopping programs, laying off staff, Filoli was one of the few places that benefited, being an outdoor destination. And since then, our membership has doubled. Our attendance has crossed four hundred and thousand visitors last year. And all of that wonderful revenue, we were able to step up and invest, similar to what you're doing, in adopting a living wage plan. In two thousand and twenty-one, that was eighteen dollars an hour that went up to thirty. And we understand, we just got the data last week, that it's going up to thirty-four. And so that increases our minimum wage to thirty-four dollars. It's a non-negotiable issue. We probably added a million dollars a year to budget, but it was a huge commitment from the board and our leadership to really walk the walk when we say our staff is our greatest asset. And so, um, before the pandemic, we had a turnover rate of employment of about fifty percent, and now our retention rate is ninety percent. And so we really are excited in helping support communities who want to help contribute to, uh, this wonderful community resource. I want to show, uh, just a brief clip. Is there a clip? We did send it.
Uh, no.
No. Okay. That's all right. Picture's worth a thousand words in this, uh, video, which I'll send for you to enjoy later. It's really just a video that we've captured of, of school visitors. And while most of us know us for the beautiful House and Gardens, we actually have, the House and Gardens represents about eighteen acres. We have six hundred and fifty-four acres. And a lot of what the newer visitors, uh, especially the, the youth programs, we're taking them out into six miles of trails, creeks, the natural land. If you haven't visited, just fourteen miles from this chamber, right over the hill, is six different ecosystems, including redwoods, uh, chaperone, uh, wildlife. And these young visitors get to come and put their hands in the creek, taste vegetables from the garden, choose, uh, vegetables from the orchard. And, you know, as an urbanite, I didn't have my first tomato off the vine until I was twenty-one. And, you know, I'm used to the Safeway ones. And so these young visitors are getting a really, uh, wonderful experience in a very accessible way. I want to encourage all of you to think of, our new business model isn't to try to provide field trips and school programs. We want to invite community partners from your districts to come and join us. Last year, in addition to the youth programs, we hosted over ten thousand visitors for free through the museums for all programs, through library programs. We believe it's our obligation to share this resource with other visitors, but also nonprofit groups and education groups. So I would encourage you, if you have partners in your community, I welcome San Carlos, uh, the seniors district to come and bring your field trips as well. It's a shame that many people have yet to visit, and we can only help do what you do so well in bettering the lives of our visitors and our community members by sharing this amazing resource that was donated so many years ago. So with that, um, oh, I wanted to add one thing. If you are not familiar with the origin of the name Filoli, it stands for Fight, Love, Live. Fight for a just cause, love your fellow man, live a good life. It was a personal credo of the original gentleman who built the estate over a hundred and seven years ago. And we feel it's very much a wonderful call to action for a lot of what we do and you do to help really try to better our communities. And so, um, I'm just really encouraged and looking forward to work.
My favorite part of the job is just getting to.
That's okay. I'm happy to answer any questions and really look forward to your next visit.
Thank you. And finally, I would just be remiss not to say that the first time I learned of this program and, uh, a former supervisor, Horsley, was present and, and plugged it to me as well. So, thank you.
I didn't get the video Supervisor Mueller, or you want me to show it, or?
I think, uh, does, does, do my colleagues need to see it to vote on the item?
No.
Then, then we can go ahead and pass it. Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you.
No speakers from chambers, Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand to comment for item number twenty-one, District Measure K item for Filoli Center. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you. Roll call? Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
And President Stolcom?
Yes.
Thank you. Item twenty-two is a Measure K request, adopt a resolution.
You know, co, co, what? Oh, sorry.
To adopt a.
It's getting late in the day.
Adopt a resolution authorizing an amendment to the district discretionary Measure K grant agreement with the Daily City Partnership, extending the term through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and redefining the payment terms with no change to the not to exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars. This is Supervisor Canepa.
Great, I'll just make the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing amendment to the district discretionary Measure K grant agreement, Daily City Partnership extending the term through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and redefining the payment terms with no change to the not to exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Public comment?
Sure, no speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Item twenty-two on Zoom, please click raise hand to comment for Daily City Partnership Measure K. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. One hand didn't just come up. This is for Christy Morales Kumasawa. Please unmute and begin speaking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Good afternoon, um, to the board, county executives, the attorney. I just wanted to, I'm the, um, Christy Morales Kumasawa. I'm the Associate Director of Capo Cultural Center, which is a program of Daily City Partnership. And thank you to Supervisor Canepa for supporting us to our entire, um, you know, from the beginning until now. This particular request, um, comes because we had some unanticipated delays in the renovation of our Social Enterprise Cafe, as I mentioned, which is part of Daily City Partnership. Our Social Enterprise is a youth and mental health-focused social enterprise. And so, uh, due to some rainstorm damage that we received last year, it sort of held us up in terms of bringing our contractors in for, um, beginning major renovations. So just wanted to give a little bit of context about why, um, there were some delays and why we're requesting this amendment.
Thank you, Christy. No further hands, Mr. President.
Thank you. Roll call? Yes. Supervisor Pine, thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
And President Stolcom?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item twenty-three is another Measure K request, adopt a resolution authorizing a one-time grant of district discretionary funds not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars to the Catalino Tapia Scholarship Foundation. Supervisor Canepa?
Great. Um, I'll just move the, uh, resolution, um, authorize, you know, one-time grant of district discretionary Measure K funds not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars to Catalino Tapia Scholarship Foundation, uh, to support and expand their scholarship program.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Uh, no speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public comment for item twenty-three, District Five Measure K item to Catalino Tapia Scholarship. One hand raised for Perla Rodriguez. Please unmute and begin.
Thank you. Uh, hello, members of the Board of Supervisors and staff. I just want to take a moment to thank all of you, uh, and thank Supervisor Canepa for your continued support of the work of the Catalino Tapia Scholarship Foundation. Uh, our organization was founded by a San Mateo County resident, a gardener by day and a philanthropist by night. Uh, thank you for helping us support students with scholarships, technology, mentoring, and educational programming. All these resources will be invested, um, in resources for students, um, first-generation, low-income students who are brimming with potential, who are incredibly bright and hardworking. So just want to take a moment to thank you for your support, um, and just let you know that, um, we're investing in San Mateo's future leaders. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. Once again, thank you.
Thank you, Perla. No further hands, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. I'll take the roll call, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller? Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
And President Stolcom?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'm not a worrywart, but is somebody going to cover, uh, the employee awards at three o'clock? Pardon? Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, item twenty-four, which I think is the last item on our agenda. Is that right?
Yes.
Uh, item twenty-four is a recommendation for the following appointments to the Independent Civilian Advisory Commission on the sheriff's office. There are, uh, members that have a term ending on June thirtieth, twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-six. Those are Marco Durazo, Rob Solano, Kalamy Salahunda. No, I didn't say that right. But anyway, Shirley Melniko? Did I get that?
Yeah, and it was Kalima Salahuda.
There you go. Alexis Lewis, and then members for initial term ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. James Simmons, William McClure, Mike Fisher, and Rebecca Carabez. Okay. Supervisor Pine, I'll start if that's okay with you?
Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. So obviously, we've been working on this for a long time. I think it's been two, two years. It's hard to believe, um, but it's been two years. It's hard to believe, but it's been two years. And here we are, the last item on the agenda for June eleventh is recommendations for appointments to the Independent Civilian Advisory Committee for the Sheriff's Office. And just to recap a bit, I know most of us know the history, but the work of the subcommittee, which was Supervisor Pine and myself, we had two lengthy study sessions, countless meetings with subject matter experts and stakeholders. We researched various models of oversight and best practices and heard from hundreds of members of the public via in-person and Zoom public comment, as well as in writing. And then on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, this board approved the creation of the commission. And we opened a recruitment. There were seventy-seven interested individuals that submitted applications to be a part of the new commission. And that was quite an amazing, I think, turnout of interest. As you recall, the composition of this commission was set this past December. It was to allow each supervisor to nominate for recommendation from the applicant pool, one member from their district. Sheriff Christina Corpus also recommends one member. And the subcommittee then interviewed and nominated one full voting member at large and two alternate-at-large commissioners. And I, I know for a fact that you'll agree that when you really look at the composition of this commission, it's really diverse in terms of its gender, race, the different communities that folks are from, life experiences, and geographic representations. And I think everybody is anxious to start this work. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the co-chair, Supervisor Pine, and he'll add a few remarks.
Thank you, President Stolka. Just a few points to add to your introduction. First, to update the board and the public on the development of a roster of independent investigators. A request for proposals for independent investigators general was issued last month and just closed on Friday. A number of applications were received from qualified parties, which the CEO's office will review and, at the request of the board, develop a roster of firms or individuals to be available as needed. Also, a word about what comes next. The final, the first meeting of the new commission will be, has been tentatively scheduled for July sixteenth. Starting at the first meeting and continuing for the rest of the year, staff is put together in ambitious and highly substantive orientation curriculum, which will be run by an outside facilitator. It's a complicated subject, so we want to make sure our new commissioners are prepared and have sufficient time to digest the information. So finally, President Stolka and I have a lot of people to thank for getting us to this point. All our colleagues on the board who put time into their own selections of their nominees, the sheriff and her team for their continued participation in this endeavor. The public who came to the meetings and gave their input, the seventy-seven residents who took time to apply, and the talented staff who've been working together behind the scenes for months. And they include Adam Ely, Connie Juarez Durrell, Michelle Duran, Emma Gonzalez, and Megan Gosh, David Silverman, and our district staff, Marcy Dragan, Linda Wollen, and Randy Trios. Thank you.
Did you mention Marcy Dragan?
I did.
Okay, just wanted to give her an extra shout out. Okay, so let's see, where do we go from here? Any questions on this matter for Supervisor Pine and myself or the CEO?
I have a quick question. I'm just wondering how how, you know, what we vote on today will be communicated to the community at large.
Well, I don't, the community at large?
We can do a press release if that's the board's desire.
Sure.
I think just something simple to kind of summarize.
Sure.
What, what, what was stated here would be a good idea.
Right, I'll have our P I O work on that right after this meeting.
Okay. Other questions?
One more. I'm just curious about, you know, I, I recognize that there may be some disagreements with how this has moved forward and, you know, other than sending us emails, is there, what, I guess is the process for those, those concerns to be sorted out?
I'm not sure I understand your question, but maybe, Mr. Caligie?
The, the, I'm sorry, the question was Supervisor Corzo?
The, the question is, let's say, I'm, I'm just trying to think like ahead. Let's say the commission is moving forward and there's a concern for maybe even a commissioner, like what would the process be for concerns to be elevated at that, at that time? Like, can we create kind of like an email just for the commission? Or for concerns about the commission?
Sure, I, we will certainly have a liaison from my office involved in those. And I would suggest that any concerns would be elevated through that liaison to me, and I'll bring those concerns to the board. But we can formalize that process for sure. Or certainly anyone can email me directly if they want, and I'll certainly pass that on to the board. But, but, yeah, we will definitely formalize a process like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have two speakers from chambers. Jim Lawrence, who's been here since nine AM, and Nancy Goodman.
Jim gets the award today.
Good afternoon. I'm going to have to say for the record, my name is Jim Lawrence. I'm with President Stolka, members of the county, members of the board. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. On your selection and your appointments, a job well done. To the members of the advisory committee, I wanted to say a few words to them. Thank them for volunteering and accepting this, this appointment to the Sheriff's Advisory Committee. Their willingness to serve in this capacity reflects their commitment to our community and dedication to ensuring the safety and well-being of all of our residents. The task ahead of them is of great importance and cannot be understated. As advisory committee members, they can and hopefully will provide valuable insight and recommendations that will hopefully shape the policies and procedures and practices of the Sheriff's Office. Help us address the complex challenges of law enforcement and improve safety to all residents in the county. Please keep in mind, in California, when a board supervisor establishes a civilian commission, it's expected that the commission will develop its own bylaws, goals, objectives, and other foundational documents. This process will ensure that the commission operates with clear guidelines and purpose and is tailored to specific mandate and community needs. To the commission, I encourage them to bring their full selves to this important role. Their diverse backgrounds, experiences, and viewpoints are what's going to make this commission a powerful force for positive change. In closing, as they embark on this commit, on this journey fixing San Mateo County, as well as a safer coalition for San Mateo County, we join in with them. We want to make this a positive and move it forward. So thank you for your commitment and dedication. Like you said, it's been a long time coming, but we're there now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Good Jim. Nancy Goodman?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm back too, but I didn't stay all the time till nine. You guys did. Thank you for everything you've done today. And I'm Nancy Goodman, Redwood City, and I'm with Fixon San Mateo County and the Coalition for a Safer San Mateo County. And first of all, to this new commission members, thank you for stepping up to this really important role. Take it on, build a team, develop goals, metrics, come up with your work plan, be strong, work together, and do a good job. It's such an important task. Jim and I and the other members of the Coalition for a Safer San Mateo County are willing to help in any way we can. We've been working on this for two years. To the board, you did, took a historic first step towards oversight, and thank you so much for that. That's huge in our county. It's, it's a huge change. It's a big step forward. And thank you for your leadership, particularly to President Stolka, Supervisor Pine, for leading that committee. It really is a big deal. Now, please help make sure that they have teeth, that they have a real job to do, and that they can get it done with, with your support. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to turn on the timer. Sorry. Okay, I do have one written comment. There were several that were sent yesterday, which was, which was emailed to the board. Did receive one today from Gil Stradonovich. Residents are concerned about the deaths that have occurred in jail and the deaths and injuries that have happened to unarmed persons in encounters with county law enforcement. The Independent Civilian Advisory Commission resolution is a historic step toward genuine law enforcement accountability and therefore to be commended. However, we need to make sure it is effective or there is no point. The commission needs to have a good job to do and be authorized to get answers when it has questions. As hopeful as this first step is, for now, you hold the only real oversight authority and will have to deal with complaints about the Sheriff's Office directly. We hope to see improvements in the commission structure in the future. Gil Stradonovich. Madam Clerk, please proceed with any Zoom comments.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, we have three hands raised. Again, this is for the Independent Civilian Advisory Commission on the Sheriff's Office. First, we'll go to Leslie, followed by Elsa Schaefer. Leslie, please unmute and begin.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes, thank you. Okay, this is Leslie Wambach from Ladera out in Portola Valley and also a representative of NAMI San Mateo County, which, in case you aren't familiar, it stands for the National Alliance on Mental Illness. First, I would like to thank you so much for taking this important step in ensuring best practices and public safety by creating this new Sheriff's Advisory Oversight Commission. As in all complex systems, more eyes lead to higher quality services and better outcomes for the citizens of the county. We at, at NAMI commend your actions, especially given how much our local jails act as de facto mental health facilities. This, of course, is no fault of the sheriff, but is more a testament to the absence of sufficient local treatment centers, a specialized mental health emergency room, and adequate supportive housing, which we hope Prop One will rectify over time. Until then, we are aware of the many suicide deaths that have occurred recently in our jails. And we ask that this new commission please initiate a review of these tragedies to see if new measures should be implemented to prevent more jail deaths like them. Thank you so much, and again, thank you for this big first step.
Thank you, Leslie. Elsa Schaefer, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I'm Elsa Schaefer. I live in Menlo Park, and I'm a member of San Mateo County's Democracy for America, though I do not represent their, their, them as a club. I want to reiterate what I said earlier today in the initial public comment, that I so laud the values that this board does represent and wanted to point to also Supervisor and President Stolka's decision not to endorse a candidate in the Sheriff's Office this last time. We are all so grateful and, and helped work personally on Sheriff Christina Corpus's campaign and are ecstatic that she is our new sheriff. However, among the, among the candidates, I would love to have you, the board, make sure that none of them, over time, expresses their personal political opinions, particularly about races like the presidential race in social media, which is public and which can be read by all. I think that could unfortunately color perceptions of their independence and of their ability to act well for, or act helpfully for all people. I'd also just like to say, I'd love to have you allow, authorize this committee, this commission to be able to receive questions from the public as well as make sure they can get answers to those questions and give them back to the public or have whomever should most deliver that message, give it back to them. Thank you so much for your time. That is not currently part of their.
Thank you. You've got to wrap it up, Elsa.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask, oh, one more speaker. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kalima Salahudin, please unmute and begin.
Hello, my name is Kalima Salahudin. I am one of the people that are going to be appointed. I first wanted to thank Fixon San Mateo County, the Coalition for Safer San Mateo County, for all of their work efforts to get us to this place. And I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for all the work that you've done, and particularly Supervisor Canepa, as I was his appointee. And I just also want to call out, you know, this is a new thing, and this is part of being courageous leaders. And being leadership that works for the minority, you know. We need support and help, extra eyes, so that the things that we're talking about and the issues that have come up are dealt with. This isn't about being anti-anything. It's about being pro-community. And so I'm hoping that this helps build trust both ways. And then the dialogue is started. It takes a while to make any substantial change, but this is a great first step, and I'm excited to work. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Kalima. Mr. President, back to you.
Thank you. I would ask Sheriff Corpus if she wants to share a few thoughts or, or not.
Thank you, President Stolka. You know, I go back to people believed in me because I brought change. And in the last year and a half, I believe that I have. And we, although there's lots more work to do, you know, we are working towards positive change, culture change, and establishing new programs. With the challenges that we have in our correctional facilities, you know, we've been able to pivot and provide more services for those that suffer from mental illness that are currently incarcerated. We have a detox program. We have our behavioral health unit. So we have done some programming to really try to move the needle forward and pivot. And, you know, in our hiring processes, you know, we really look for people that are going to be good to other people. It's people first, service above self. And I just want to thank the board and thank Adam and his team and Emma and Marcy and everyone else that was involved in working with us. And, you know, it takes, it takes partnership to, and collaboration to make things work. And as long as we have the right direction, I believe that there, you know, there's hope for, for, for positive change. So thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I'd like to make a motion to have the board approve the appointments to the Independent Civilian Advisory Commission on the Sheriff's Office. And those member, those members are set forth in our agenda, and I don't think we need to do anything further on that. Is there a second?
A second?
Move in second in. Roll call.
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa, President, and President Stolka?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned?
That's right. The time is three fourteen PM, and the meeting is now adjourned.